Welcome, it having reached the hour of 5:30 PM. I am calling the May 25th, 2021 Modesto City Council Meeting to Order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmembers Madrigal?
[inaudible]
Councilmember Ricky?
Here.
Zalaki?
Here.
Canoyer?
Yeah.
Wright?
Here.
Escutia Brayton?
Yeah.
Mary Swollen?
Here.
Will everyone please rise?
Tony Madrigal here.
It's having reached the hour of 5:30 PM. I am calling the May 25th, 2021 Modesto City Council Meeting to Order and ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmembers Madrigal?
All right, well, everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation by Martin Rocker, Modesto Covenant Church. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is our one nation under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we gather here today in the midst of a full day in anticipation of a full evening. As we gather, we pause now to recognize your presence. God, while there's much that fills our days, we want to even now pause to hear your voice. With the challenges before us, challenges here in our city, God, challenges in the world around us, challenges with things like COVID and things that we don't completely understand. God, we recognize that we are not alone. You are with us. We call out to you in humility. We recognize our need for you. God, you are our help in ages past and our hope for years to come. Lord God, as citizens, we recognize that you've placed before us the governing authorities. We pray for our city, for the various levels of city officials and workers, and specifically for our city council before us today. Just as you have called them to these positions, we pray that you would enable them to accomplish the task before them. We ask you, Lord, that you would graciously give them wisdom as they make decisions, a sense of the needs of the people of our city. Give them a thirst for what is right and just. Lord, also give them the ability to work together. God, there's much that can divide us. We pray that you'd help them to find harmony, even in the midst of honest disagreement. Lord, for each of them, we pray that you'd give them personal peace and joy in their lives. And for the agenda set before them tonight, Lord, give them your direction as to what would most benefit those who live and work in our wonderful city of Modesto. And in your name, we pray these things.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. Does the city clerk have any announcements?
No, Mayor, we have not received any written public comments.
Thank you. Do any of the council members have any conflicts of interest? All right. Seeing then, will the city attorney report out on closed session?
Yes, Mayor, the closed session agenda actually was modified to remove one of the items, Dorado versus the city of Modesto. The council heard the other three items. It's my understanding that reportable action or action was reported for the for the public employee discipline dismissal release item. No other reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Next is acknowledgement and presentations, and we have the poem of the month by Mr. Ed Bearden.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ed Bearden. I'm Modesto's fifth poet laureate, serving the city of Modesto from 2008 to 2012. Monday is Memorial Day, and what I have for you is a poem entitled "Memorial Day." So take a little tour with me. We meet early on Memorial Day, gather flowers. Those we have grown are best ferns and baby's breath. Lament the lack of hollyhocks, grandma's favorite, although once again, it was we who didn't plant them and make the rounds. The old cemetery first, hunting for graves the way we always do. Is it in the third row or the fourth? Must line up with that tree, remember, from last year? Then, our homage done, we drive to the new place, new still. My father counting all the graves he's bought and paid for, all the relatives he's buried at his own expense. "I should have bought an acre," he says, when they open this place up. And so we visit, place flowers, summon cans of water between headstones of those who once were fathers and mothers or grandparents. It's a comfort somehow, each year remembering the same things in the same way. Wondering aloud when we find one of ours with flowers already placed, who it was had beat us there, were first, as if that were an unfair thing to do and not an honest care. Then, our visitation done of aunts and uncles, ancestors now at peace, the infant niece still grieved by young parents who will grieve the death forever. Our little tribe begins to spread out, wondering the even rows of graves of strangers, remarking, "Here's one who served in World War II, and there one who died too young." As one by one, we go from graves that hold our oldest memories to those we never knew at all, and holding nothing of the past, they bring us to the present, where we reclaim our lives again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we will have a presentation from Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors for update related to COVID-19.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, staff. So today, I have the distinct pleasure of bringing who we know as affectionately Dr. V., our Public Health Director for Stanislaus County. For the past few months, I've been providing these updates, given the fact that obviously with everything going on with the pandemic, Dr. V. and her staff's time was really spread thin. But now, as we are seeing a little bit of lax in the cases and things are coming to more of a positive light at the end of the tunnel, she did have this opportunity to come and address Modesto City Council. I know there's been many questions that I think she can answer even better than I can. But the past few weeks, everything that I presented has been directly the presentation she's giving to Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors. So although the information wasn't coming from Dr. V. indirectly, it was coming from Dr. V. and me just being the liaison to present the information. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to update the council and the public on the county's behalf with everything that's been going on with the COVID-19 pandemic. But now, I'd like to welcome Dr. V. to address mayor, council, and members of the public on the steps that are being taken and where we stand with the current pandemic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, Dr. V.
Thank you. I like that I come out to someone tall. Don't have to adjust the mic. Okay. Good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. I'm just gonna dive right in. Let's try this one. Okay. And so I usually start presentations with this, which is called the EpiCurve. And what I'd like to point out, I did this just for the last few months so we can really zoom in on what's going on right now. Some of my other slides, I added some slides to try to show some context of where we've been and where we're going. But it's really hard to see when you do the last year and a half in one slide rather than trying to zoom in. So this one zoomed in just since February 15. The blue bars are confirmed cases, which are PCR tests for the most part. The green are probable, which are primarily antigen tests. And so you can see that adding those together, we've been coming down pretty nicely. At the end there, that's I put that gray box there because those data are not going to be complete yet. We can get results up to seven days after. The other thing I'd like to explain is this is based on episode date, which means once we get a positive, we call them, and they may have been symptomatic three or four days before the test was taken. So this is trying to get as close to when they really were sick as possible. So that's why there's quite a delay in really being able to fill out this chart. So it looks pretty good. If I can direct your attention a little bit to that, the bars above the 4/26/21 date, we did have a little bit of an increase there. You can kind of see it here. You'll see it a little bit better in the in the graphs that are coming. So this is the daily case rate. It's the seven-day average with a seven-day lag, so it's basically looking at day eight to 14 ago and averaging those data. It's a case rate per 100,000. So you can see at the peak, which was, you know, about beginning of February, end of January, we were about 80 or 90 cases per 100,000. Right now, we're about 7.6, I believe is our adjusted case rate right now. So we've come down very nicely from our large peak. The purple line is the 10 where we had to get to to get into the purple or to get out of the purple tier and into the red tier. I guess the other thing I'd like you to see is, you know, what since we crossed that purple line of case rate of 10, right around June 17, we've only been down for about four or five weeks below with a lower case rate last late September and most of October. So we have been seeing quite a bit of disease over the past year and a half. This is zoomed in just so you can see the end and what you can see here with our case rate, remember, it's a seven-day lag. You can see right around that 5/3 date, we did have a little bump, but it's since been coming down nicely. So we're coming back down at a pretty good rate, but we leveled out a little bit too high, came down a little bit, had a little bit of a bump that was probably spring break slash Easter gathering, and then we've been coming down again since then. This is the second measure that the state uses for a tier assignment, and this is the percent positive. It's also a seven-day average with a seven-day lag. So you can see we peaked up, I'm sorry, the picture's in there, but it's somewhere around, you know, 19, 20%. It was higher last summer, but that was mostly because tests weren't as available, and we had to restrict them just to people who were symptomatic, whereas in the winter, it was we had wide test availability, even though it was, you know, busy. So you see that the percent positive got high, but not not quite as high as it was last summer. That's not a reflection of anything other than widespread test availability. So you can see we came down, had a little jump up from, you know, just under four to just a little over five in early May, but it's coming down again, which is just really great news. And zooming in again, you can really see what we've been going on. So we're very happy that we're going in the correct direction. This graph I show each week at the Board of Supervisors, this is the orange line is the people in the hospital, all COVID hospitalizations, just COVID, not all people, and the red is all COVID positive in the ICU. Our bed poll means that they are considered infectious and under isolation. It differs a little bit different from the state, if you've wondered why our numbers are different. They just keep them on their count even after they're released from isolation. We just count those in isolation. So more the acute illness time. So you can see we peaked over at about 363, I think it was, in early January. We are now down as of today, it was, well, yesterday, it was 37 when I made this slide, which is great. So when I looked back to really see where we've been, we haven't been below 37. We had one day in October where we were, and otherwise, it was June 14. So knowing that we've had about 11 and a half months with a with a hospitalization that's been above where we are now, it really is showing us a couple of things. One is, we don't have a lot of disease transmission, but the second thing is that our disease transmission is higher than it was back in late September, early October, but because of vaccination, we've got a lot of people protected with those at risk for severe disease, those 65 and older especially, because age is the biggest risk factor. So we're seeing relatively higher case rates but lower hospitalizations, and it's really a vaccine effect. So there's a couple pieces of good news in here. And then zooming in on what we saw, you can see we did have hospitalizations go up there at the end of April, beginning of May. Between our case rate, our percent positive, and our hospitalization increase, we actually made metrics to move back into purple for one week, so a little bit of a tense time, trying to say, no, 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 we're okay, because with that seven-day lag, we know what the next seven days look like, and so we only met it one week. But we did get a little bit of a bump from spring break slash Easter that endangered our red tier status. So as we move on, here was what I prepared this morning. This, we have a computer database that we get to log into, so it's really very close to what the state puts out at noon. So unadjusted case rate is 7.8. It got adjusted down to 7.6, so that's usually what you see. The percent positive is 3.1 overall. We also look at our percent positive in the Quartile 1 Healthy Places Index. Those are the people who live in the places with the fewest opportunities for health, and that is a little higher. It has gone up since that late April, early May, and has not really come down as fast as overall. As we look at the test volume, we're doing 311.4. Those are tests per day, per 100,000, so it's quite a few tests, you know, multiply it times 5.62, and you know, we're doing a lot of tests per day on average. Most of those tests are obviously running Monday through Friday, so it's higher than that during the week. The state median was 323.4. I believe it's like 290-something for this one, so we're being adjusted down based on testing rate. The important point of that is testing matters for more reasons than one. One is that it affects how our tier is assigned, and so we continue to promote tests. Another is, of course, we want people to know that if they're infected and be able to isolate and stop the spread. So here's a list of all the places. It's on our website, where you can go for testing. All the testing's free. It continues to be for now. I don't know how long that will last, but for now, it's all free. Just go in, it's pretty quick. Go online, make an appointment first, please. Syrup prevalence by region. So this is, it's interesting. The state has been looking at, basically trying to determine immunity. So this is people with antibodies to COVID-19. These antibodies can either be from having had the disease, so having been sick and developed immunity, or from vaccination. So when they first posted it, maybe two months ago, we were around 48, which we relatively led the state, but we are now at 71.2. These are all adults, 18 and older, so it's good news that as we look at all our adults, nearly three-quarters of them are protected from COVID-19. This is a little bit squishy data. It's not, it's not perfect. It's not a random sampling. They do do a lot of statistical adjustment to it, trying to make it representative of the county. So it comes from people who donate blood. It comes from random laboratory samples. It comes from people who get their antibodies tested. So it's a whole bunch of places that this number's coming from, but it's still really good. We've been watching it go up as we've been vaccinating, and it's nice to see it going up so high. So I'm gonna say a few things about vaccines, and then I pulled out a little bit of Modesto-specific data for you guys tonight. In Stanislaus County, this is from the state website, covid19.ca.gov, there is 387,595 doses given to Stanislaus County residents as of yesterday. Our population estimates for those 12 and above, those who are eligible for vaccine, is 469,000, a little more. For the city of Modesto, 176 is the estimate. And so there's been about 146,000 doses given to Modesto city residents as well. So getting on our way, still some work to do with vaccination. We look at how many doses we're giving per day, and I think everybody knows that demand has really slowed down. So we were on a, first, it was the supply that really constrained us, and you can see we got up to about a peak of 6,000 doses in a day. We're coming down, still averaging just a little under 2,000. So that's great news. Public health isn't giving that many of those anymore. There are so many partners in the community, between physicians, pharmacies, many places that people can go, that still giving about 2,000 a day, I think is pretty good on average. So as we looked at vaccine coverage by city for 12-year-olds, so you can see the cities, there isn't really a lot of variation from city to city. I put this out to start talking a little bit more about Modesto. So here, by our data, 16 and a half percent of those eligible, so 12 and older, are partially vaccinated, and 33.11% are fully vaccinated. So that's about 50% with a single dose. The numbers were better, but then they added the 12, 15-year age group, so that added about 33,000 kids countywide that, you know, hadn't been eligible for the vaccine. So our whole numbers dropped a bit, but they're coming back up with our continued vaccination. So these numbers change all the time, especially when new groups are added. So as we look at it by race, this is for Modesto. So I went into Modesto city specific data, actually, our Epi's, our lovely Epi's did. So we can see a little bit about who's getting vaccinated. Native, Hawaiian, other Pacific Island American Indian, they're pretty small groups, and so small changes in vaccination numbers can really make these numbers change a lot. Certainly, looking at white, non-Hispanic, and white Hispanic, which is listed as Latino, Latina, we can see just a few differences in there, but not too far apart, maybe about 5% difference in vaccination rates. So still some work to do across some race and ethnicity boundaries here. As we look at it by age group, this was very surprising to me. Kind of had the Epi's check the number, but Modesto's apparently doing quite well with 65 and older, so you're getting close to 90% with at least one dose, which is phenomenal, because about, we're about 80% countywide. So 51.43 fully vaccinated and 37.04 partially vaccinated. These numbers do change as data get cleaned, because there's about three different registries these data are going in, and as they go into, try to go into one database, they do have a lot of cleaning that needs to be done. So these numbers may change, I just warn everybody, but it's looking really good for those 65 and older. 50 to 64, you can see the number is still, still pretty good. And then 18 to 49, you can see the decreases, the 16 to 17-year-olds, and then the 12 to 15, who just opened up and we're just getting started on those. So again, still more work to do. Those who have perceived themselves to be at high risk have gotten vaccinated. We have some work to do with the younger people. So here is what we've been doing through public health. As you can see, we've been running up many pods. We've kind of shifted from running the big, large community vaccination sites, because the demand has really gone down and trying to make it more accessible, get into people's neighborhoods, especially for those who have transportation problems. And so we're continuing to vaccinate, still not doing terribly bad. 3,000 a week is about what we're doing, but like I said, we have many partners out there vaccinating as well. So hopefully, we're getting into some good areas where there is a lack of access. And if we go to the next slide, here is our schedule for the week. It's on, we upload it, upload it, and we load it on our website, hopefully every Friday, Thursday to Friday, so people can look at it. We get it into the MyTurn system, so people can start registering. Some are there, some are not, but as you can see, we're closing down like Modesto Center Plaza, which has just been a great vaccination site, second doses only as it's finishing out its large service to the community. One, a couple of them I'd like to point out, we're at the flea market at Crow's Landing Saturday and Sunday, hoping Memorial Day weekend will be a nice busy time. They were there last weekend as well and got 166 vaccines given, so we were pretty happy with that, because we're doing more advertising and promotion and working with a lot of community partners, and the state is getting involved and doing a lot of other outreach to their networkers as well, trying to get people to come in for this vaccination. So we have a wide variety of places we're going each week. So this is the MyTurn system. You just go to myturn.ca.gov, there it is at the top, and or you can call, either way works just fine, and sign up. It'll show you all your locations if you're eligible for that vaccine, because you have to be 12 and older. All the locations, you can go, it's in about 14 or 16 different languages, so hopefully we're hitting the languages that the people here need. You can call if you don't have a computer and can't do this online. If you're homebound, they have a way to take your information, they'll get it to us, and between a couple different services, we have ways to get vaccines into people who are homebound as well. So there's many different ways to get a vaccine. We're working very hard to try to meet the need of the community. So I think that's my last slide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind staying for a few minutes, just in case we have any questions from the council. Councilmember Ricky?
Hi, Dr. V. First of all, thank you so much for coming. Thanks for all this knowledge. This is really, it's really great information. I just want to follow up on a question I asked last week, just about testing in schools. I know, because I'm a parent, and I've had quite a bit of struggles this year with my son, and he was in junior high, who's been sent home a number of times because of COVID exposures. And there's, you know, and the last time, they said he couldn't come back for 10 days or whatever, even though we tested him, he didn't actually have it, which is fantastic. It's good news. But I'm just wondering if you guys have a plan for testing or, you know, ways that we could try to do this a little better, because it's been really disruptive and, you know, potentially dangerous.
Yeah, that's a really hard one, because once there's an exposure, there really isn't a, there isn't a alternative to quarantine. Testing doesn't really work all that well, because by the time the test's positive, you've already exposed people, which is the problem with quarantine. So if they keep getting exposed, there's quarantine. There's a lot of, there's a lot of mitigation in place in schools that I think has worked really, really well, certainly for elementary schools, right? You know, they, if you could stay six feet apart, if they maximize their air exchanges in their rooms, if they wear a mask, it really, they're really, we haven't seen spread in schools. Sadly, that's not true with junior high and high schools. We absolutely have seen spread in schools, and most of that, I think, is not in the classroom. It's the socialization that takes place outside of the classroom. So there is testing at schools available through the state. It's antigen testing. They have a program that supplies it to schools. They've made it pretty easy, because you used to have to have a license to be able to run it, and a physician to be able to order it. They've kind of done all that from the state. They've extended it, their clear license to school sites if they want it, and the state epidemiologist assigned the physician order. So there are a lot of ways that it's been made easy, but it's not going to be that easy, and then antigen tests carry with them some, you know, it, they're not as reliable as the PCR. They're fast, and they're 15 minutes, but but you have to confirm it with a PCR anyway if it's positive and you don't expect it. So there's a lot of little caveats around the testing. It's very difficult. We really need good point-of-care testing that's just not available yet. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, I guess it's kind of a question like, you know, it's disruptive to the students, like, and it's, you know, it's kind of dangerous to be unvaccinated and stuff like that potentially too. So I'm asking the question more like out of concern, like, and I know you're super busy with a whole bunch of stuff going on, but I just wanted to flag, like, we've got next year's school year, you know, two and a half months away, like, if they could, I just hope they really think hard of, you know, about ways to kind of slow down the disruptions and, and, you know, find some better, because like in talking to the administration, it's like there's kind of not a lot they can do right now. They need more help and leadership.
Yeah, and the other thing I'd say is for at least high school and junior high, there's now a vaccine, and if you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine after an exposure. So it's more the
Oh, I didn't know that. That's awesome.
Yeah, no, once you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine or test after an exposure. So what, once we can get the kids vaccinated, it really helps us with our mitigation. At the elementary school, but they're quite a bit of a different place where they are a little easier to cohort and do all the things you need to do. So, yeah, we have real hope for next year. That's why we're just trying to get the vaccine out. We're trying to go to all the schools, really work with them, provide it on the school site, make it as easy as we can, because we know it's very important to keep them in school for their education.
Yeah, that's great news. Thank you so much.
Any other questions from council members? Any questions from the public? I don't see any online or in the public. Any comments from the council? All right, Councilmember Canoyer?
I, I can't get my little hand raised, other than my little hand raised. I just want to thank her for the information. It's wonderful to see going down, and also they kind of don't, I'm a great-grandmother, so I'm not, you know...
Twelve-year-olds, so you can see the cities. There isn't really a lot of variation from city to city. I put this out to start talking a little bit more about Modesto. So here, by our data, sixteen and a half percent of those eligible, so twelve and older, are partially vaccinated, and thirty-three point one-one percent are fully vaccinated. So that's about fifty percent with a single dose. The numbers were better, but then they added the twelve, fifteen-year age group, so that about thirty-three thousand kids countywide that, you know, hadn't been eligible for the vaccine. So our whole numbers dropped a bit, but they're coming back up with our continued vaccinations. So these numbers change all the time, especially when new groups are added. So as we look at it by race, this is for Modesto. So I went into Modesto city-specific data. Actually, our Eppies, our lovely Eppies did. So we can see a little bit about who's getting vaccinated. Native Hawaiian, other Pacific Island American Indian, they're pretty small groups, and so small changes in vaccination numbers can really make these numbers change a lot. Certainly, looking at white, non-Hispanic and white Hispanic, which is listed as Latino, Latina, we can see just a few differences in there, but not too far apart, maybe about five percent difference in vaccination rates. So still some work to do across some race and ethnicity boundaries here. As we look at it by age group, this was very surprising to me. Kind of had the Eppies check the number, but Modesto's apparently doing quite well with sixty-five and older. So you're getting close to ninety percent with at least one dose, which is phenomenal, because we're about eighty percent countywide. So fifty-one point four-three fully vaccinated and thirty-seven point oh-four partially vaccinated. These numbers do change as data get cleaned, because there's about three different registries these data are going in. And as they go into, try to go into one database, they do have a lot of cleaning that needs to be done. So these numbers may change, I just warn everybody, but it's looking really good for those sixty-five and older. Fifty to sixty-four, you can see the number is still pretty good. And then eighteen to forty-nine, you can see the decreases. The sixteen to seventeen-year-olds, and then the twelve to fifteen, who just opened up and we're just getting started on those. So again, still more work to do. Those who have perceived themselves to be at high risk have gotten vaccinated. We have some work to do with the younger people. So here is what we've been doing through public health. As you can see, we've been running up many pods. We've kind of shifted from running the big, large community vaccination sites, because the demand has really gone down and trying to make it more accessible and get into people's neighborhoods, especially for those who have transportation problems. And so we're continuing to vaccinate, still not doing terribly bad. Three thousand a week is about what we're doing. But like I said, we have many partners out there vaccinating as well. So hopefully, we're getting into some good areas where there is a lack of access. And if we go to the next slide, here is our schedule for the week. It's on, we upload it, upload it. We load it on our website, hopefully, every Friday, Thursday to Friday, so people can look at it. We get it into the MyTurn system, so people can start registering. Some are there, some are not. But as you can see, we're closing down, like, Modesto Center Plaza, which has just been a great vaccination site. Second doses only as it's finishing out its large service to the community. One, a couple of them I'd like to point out. We're at the flea market at Crow's Landing Saturday and Sunday, hoping Memorial Day weekend will be a nice busy time. They were there last weekend as well and got a hundred and sixty-six vaccines given. So we were pretty happy with that, because we're doing more advertising and promotion and working with a lot of community partners. And the state is getting involved in doing a lot of other outreach to their networkers as well, trying to get people to come in for this vaccination. So we have a wide variety of places we're going each week. So this is the MyTurn system. You just go to myturn.ca.gov. There it is at the top. And, or you can call, either way works just fine, and sign up. It'll show you all your locations if you're eligible for that vaccine, because you have to be twelve and older. All the locations you can go. It's in about fourteen or sixteen different languages. So hopefully, we're hitting the languages that the people here need. You can call if you don't have a computer and can't do this online. If you're homebound, they have a way to take your information. They'll get it to us. And between a couple of different services, we have ways to get vaccines into people who are homebound as well. So there's many different ways to get a vaccine. We're working very hard to try to meet the need of the community. So I think that's my last slide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you don't mind staying for a few minutes, just in case we have any questions from the council. Councilmember Ricky.
Hi, Dr. B. First of all, thank you so much for coming. Thanks for all this knowledge. This is really, it's really great information. I just want to follow up on a question I asked last week, just about testing in schools. I know, because I'm a parent, and I've had quite a bit of struggles this year with my son, and he was in junior high, who's been sent home a number of times because of COVID exposures. And there's, you know, and the last time, they said he couldn't come back for ten days or whatever, even though we tested him, he didn't actually have it, which is fantastic. It's good news. But I'm just wondering if you guys have a plan for testing or, you know, ways that we could try to do this a little better? Because it's been really disruptive and, you know, potentially dangerous.
Yeah, that's a really hard one, because once there's an exposure, there really isn't a, there isn't an alternative to quarantine. Testing doesn't really work all that well, because by the time the test's positive, you've already exposed people, which is the problem with quarantine. So if they keep getting exposed, there's quarantine. There's a lot of, there's a lot of mitigation in place in schools that I think has worked really, really well, certainly for elementary schools, right? You know, if you could stay six feet apart, if they maximize their air exchanges in their rooms, if they wear a mask, it really, they're really, we haven't seen spread in schools. Sadly, that's not true with junior high and high schools. We absolutely have seen spread in schools. And most of that, I think, is not in the classroom. It's the socialization that takes place outside of the classroom. So there is testing at schools available through the state. It's antigen testing. They have a program that supplies it to schools. They've made it pretty easy, because you used to have to have a license to be able to run it and a physician to be able to order it. They've kind of done all that from the state. They've extended their clear license to school sites if they want it. And the state epidemiologist assigned the physician order. So there are a lot of ways that it's been made easy, but it's not going to be that easy. And then antigen tests carry with them some, you know, it, they're not as reliable as the PCR. They're fast and they're fifteen minutes, but you have to confirm it with a PCR anyway if it's positive and you don't expect it. So there's a lot of little caveats around the testing. It's very difficult. We really need good point-of-care testing that's just not available yet. Did that answer the question?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, I guess it's kind of a question like, you know, it's disruptive to the students. Like, and it's, you know, it's kind of dangerous to be unvaccinated and stuff like that potentially, too. So I'm asking the question more like out of concern, like, and I know you're super busy with a whole bunch of stuff going on, but I just wanted to flag, like, we've got next year's school year, you know, two and a half months away. Like, if they could, I just hope they really think hard of, you know, about ways to kind of slow down the disruptions and, you know, find some better. Because like in talking to the administration, it's like there's kind of not a lot they can do right now. They need more help and leadership.
Yeah, and the other thing I'd say is for at least high school and junior high, there's now a vaccine. And if you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine after an exposure. So it's more the element.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's awesome.
Yeah, no. Once you're fully vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine or test after exposure. So what, once we can get the kids vaccinated, it really helps us with our mitigation. At the elementary school, but they're quite a bit of a different place, where they are a little easier to cohort and do all the things you need to do. So, yeah, we have real hope for next year. That's why we're just trying to get the vaccine out. We're trying to go to all the schools, really work with them, provide it on the school site, make it as easy as we can, because we know it's very important to keep them in school for their education.
Yeah, that's great news. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Any other questions from council members? Any questions from the public? I don't see any online or in the public. Any comments from the council? All right, Councilmember Canoyer.
I, I can't get my little hand raised, other than my little hand raised. I just want to thank her for the information. It's wonderful to see going down. And also, they kind of don't, I'm a great-grandmother, so I'm not, you know, have to sign. But if you're going to the schools, is there a permit that the parents can sign prior? So that it's, you know, when you're in school, you know, or does the parent have to be there, or how are you handling that?
So, so far, we're requiring the parent or legal guardian to be present at the time of vaccination. One is, we didn't want the sixteen and seventeen-year-olds driving afterwards, because sixteen and seventeen-year-olds have a history of passing out after vaccines. And we need to keep them safe, even with that fifteen-minute observation time. So right now, we are requiring it, which we know is a barrier, but we've gotten a lot of pushback from parents who think we're going to vaccinate them without consent. So we're trying to be very clear that we are not vaccinating anyone without consent. We are trying to get consent. What we are working through our risk management is, is vaccinating, having them bring in consent in two different ways. Having them sign that this friend or this caregiver, my grandma, can sign for them. She's a, she's, you know, like they do for all these other things. She can, she can be there with them, and that's okay. The other thing that other counties have gone to is video conferencing. So bring in your paper, then you got to call mom, and we got to make sure that's mom, and see her face and get her consent, and then we can do it without mom or dad being present. I know it's a barrier, requiring a parent to be there. It really is. We're trying to find the best way to get real good consent and know that the parent consents without, and not have a barrier. So it's kind of a little bit of a balance. And we know, we're trying to strike the right place. Right now, it's parent has to be there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Yes, we have a comment from the public. Could you please step up to the microphone? Thank you very much.
Hi, Chris Davidson, 111 Elwood Avenue. I have a question about the variations they're showing up. If you could maybe clarify with them all of that, I appreciate it.
Yeah, sure. The variants are really a problem. So we have variants in this county. There are, they are, viruses change as they spread. So as they reproduce, they change. They make mistakes and they change. And so we know that the spike protein, which is what the vaccine is made to, and just the spike protein, is where it binds to our receptors in our body, and that's how it infects us. So the spike protein's very important. So these variants have changes in the spike protein that make it bind easier or stronger. And so they're more likely to infect when you breathe them in. You know, it's not like you breathe in one virus and you get sick. You usually have to bring in thousands. So this might mean instead of a thousand, it's five hundred or something like that. So these variants, that's how they call them, more easily transmissible. So there's a bunch of them now. The B-117 was first described in the UK, and we have, I think the last number, boom, email just came in, was twenty-six that we've identified in this county. So B-117 is pretty much everywhere. The P-1 is the one from Brazil, and we have identified that here as well. I believe that was just about a week ago. And then the B-1351 is the one from South Africa, and we have that as well. What we have not yet identified is the 617, and I'm sorry, there are numbers. You're not supposed to use the, where they came from, which is the one circulating in India, 617, 1, 2, and 3. I believe they have three of them now. We have not identified that one, although it has been identified in California and in the United States. So all of these, the vaccine is working very well so far. Sometimes the tests can get a little bit iffy if they're targeting an area that's changed. There is one that's a little bit different, but you can still diagnose it. Some of the monoclonal antibody treatments that were out don't work as well with some of the variants, like the B-117. So then when that became prevalent, we could no longer use the one monoclonal antibody by itself. It had to be used with another one, so you had two of them. So that's the problem, is they started to get some escape. But right now, we have, our vaccines are working. And so I think that's the most important thing to know. For California, and this is on their website, as of last month, more than sixty percent of all the isolates from California are B-117. So it is what's circulating here. So not just in St. Louis County, but all of California. So did that answer your question? They are a concern, and that's kind of the reason that the masking and everything has stayed a little bit more stricter, because as we get more transmission and more spread, that's when these variants come out. And so the longer we can get, we can keep them from coming out and get people immune, so they don't have a chance to come out, the better off we're actually going to be overall. So it's just kind of this balance between all of these things that's trying to be balanced with everything we're doing.
All right, I see one more comment from the public. So you can stay there. This is on Zoom. Sebastian Jones.
Good afternoon, City Councilman. Dr. V, I have a question. I just want to commend you on a great job. I learned something, took some little snapshots, and I want to thank you for doing a good job and letting the club know. We don't know anything, but we do learn some things, like what we're doing now. So I want to thank you for that and keep up the good work. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, thank you very much. That's very kind. You know, there's a huge team that works on all this. I just come and talk about it, but there's an enormous team. It's hundreds of people really working on that, so thank you.
All right, I will just close this segment by personally taking this opportunity to thank you for dealing with what I'm sure you never in your career as a physician would believe that you would actually have to deal with, and you're doing it, and you did it. And I recognize how overwhelming this has been at times. And I remember first hearing the word pandemic in my very first microbiology class, and it was something that when I knew I heard it in March 2020, that we were, our world was changing. And you helped us navigate through it, and I am so grateful for you. So I just want to say that again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We appreciate your report. Next is miscellaneous legislation and appointments. We will consider accepting the resignation of David Roddick from the city's Board of Zoning Adjustment. Do I have, all right.
Move.
It's moved by Councilmember Canoyer, seconded by Councilmember Wright. May I ask the city clerk to please call the roll?
Councilmembers Madrigal.
Aye.
Ricky.
Aye.
Zalaki.
Aye.
Canoyer.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Escuia Brayton.
Aye.
Mayor Swollen.
Excuse me, aye, carries unanimously. Next item, consider accepting the resignation of Roderia Air from the city's Board of Zoning Adjustment.
So move.
Move or approve?
Motion by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Zalaki, I believe.
Yes.
All right, may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Madrigal.
Aye.
Ricky.
Aye.
Zalaki.
Aye.
Canoyer.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Escuia Brayton.
Aye.
Mayor Swollen.
Aye, it passes unanimously. Next, consider accepting the resignation of Joseph Cahill from the city's Landmark Preservation Commission.
So move.
Have a motion by Councilmember Wright.
Second.
Second is by Councilmember Escudia Brayton. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Madrigal.
Aye.
Ricky.
Aye.
Zalaki.
Aye.
Canoyer.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Escuia Brayton.
Aye.
Mayor Swollen.
Aye, it carries unanimously. One moment. All right, we are ready for public comment. And I will note that this is for items not on the council agenda tonight. And you will have three minutes to speak. And I have two blue cards for people for items not on the agenda. There's two others, but they will be on the agenda, those topics. So if we could first hear from Chris Davidson, and you will have three minutes. Thank you.
Chris Davidson, Elwood Avenue, Modesto. Honorable mayor and councilmembers, staff. What brings me here is not only a problem for me, but also my neighbors. Prior to the pandemic, Minis was sold. It's common knowledge that restaurants have been one of the hardest-hit businesses. Perhaps, this is one reason why, Minis was converted to a video dance club bar, the Splash Video Bar. Unfortunately, our neighborhood is subject to what is happening there. On weekends, the music plays at a level that shakes the windows, typically followed by screaming. Earlier this month, I called and filed a noise complaint, and at that time, the officer recommended that I speak with a manager or owner. And so I went. Apparently, the, at that time, the police car was noticed by someone, and the club stopped making noise for a few weeks. Last Sunday, the 23rd, it was one day of a series of days whereby the level of bass, again, permeated the house to the backyard, was punctuated by yelling. After several hours of this noise, I went to the bar to speak with the manager and owner, and I was kind of sent packing by their staff without any discussion as to why I was there. So at that time, I went door-to-door discussing the situation with my neighbors, and everyone I spoke with signed this little petition I put together. And in fact, two of the neighbors, when living closer to the noise than I and that have small children, including a newborn, was already discussing the matter with one of my neighbors when I arrived. My house is on Elwood Street, the second oldest neighborhood in Modesto. And from my house, I can walk to any of several landmarks of my childhood. I was raised here and went to Lincoln School, and when Modesto was like ten times smaller, and when Sundays were a day of rest. It's important to have strong businesses, but it's also important to have strong neighborhoods. Businesses and neighborhoods should be appropriate for families that are raising kids. We, the residents of the Elwood neighborhood, request that the noise ordinance accommodates sounds and sound levels that don't interfere with the activities of families, and that these are for the businesses in the residential neighborhoods, and that the ordinance would be enforced. So this petition is for the mayor and councilmembers. Here we go. And these are my comments, and I just wanted to submit them to the clerk. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, online, I see Ramon Rodriguez.
Good evening, good evening, madam.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. Last Saturday, with a listening session, and it was a success, but not to expect so many people, because it's the first time that we have it. But I would recommend to have like more awareness so that more people around Modesto could know about and that they will come either to show support for the police department or have like, or have like a negative encounter with the Modesto Police Department, and also to share your ideas how to improve the police department, and also asking for a civilian review board and a mental health crisis intervention program. And I'm proud that the city has taken steps to create this, because I've been to eleven City Council meeting, and they haven't done that. A council member decided to create a committee for building trust between the city and police without informing the people to have less listening sessions. And I told the City Council to have it. And it was a success for Modesto. But the only issue that I had is that we were promised to have a five-minute talking period, but it was reduced to three, and that's why everyone else, who had like a negative encounter with the Modesto Police Department, had, cannot finish their time. Some went over beyond a three-limited time period. So the next time that we have another listening session, it should be at least five minutes. And also, we need to spread more awareness, because the first one, it was announced almost too late. But all I know is the second, the next second section, I mean, the second listening session, it should be promoted on time and prompt before, the week before or something, so that more people can come and share their concerns and ideas to improve the police department, also to implement the programs and the civilian review board. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're welcome. Teresa Gamboa.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager, staff, and members of the public. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I would like to thank the Modesto Police Department for all that they do for us each and every day. They put their lives on the line and their personal safety on the line for us, for our safety and our well-being. Before we go too far in reimagining the police or defunding the police or sending unarmed social workers out on calls, we should look at cities who have done this. Seattle, Austin, Minneapolis, and New York all now have a great increase in violent crime, murder, residential burglaries. We already have a police department with lower staff levels. We don't need fewer officers. We need more officers on our street. We need to support them and appreciate them and thank them for what they do for us. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
You're welcome. Diana Ringer.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Congress, Congress, councilmen, and staff and public there. I just wanted to reaffirm the tremendous opportunity that Modesto has to create a world-class public access channel for the Central Valley. I've had an opportunity in the past to visit certain stations that have a strong working relationship between the city and the county and public access. And it's truly inspiring to see what they've been able to do. Mary, I know that you're, you know, fairly new into this process and that you bring a lot of fresh vision and blood into the process. And I hope that you will take the time and the opportunity to explore how Modesto can use public access television to create a positive narrative of all the good things that happened here in Modesto. If you realize, our narrative, we're big enough now that we don't need our narrative of who we are as a community shaped by Sacramento or Stockton. We're big enough, and we need to have our own voice. And public access television is a wonderful tool to do that. So I just encourage you to look at it with fresh eyes, to see what can be done. And I would be happy to be a part of that conversation if it makes sense for you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sebastian Jones.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
And my fellow city, city council. Once again, I come to you with the Dr. Martin Luther King Committee. First of all, I want to thank Travis Teeger's mom, sister, and Travis grandma. It was a pleasure meeting him, Sarah. That was a warm feeling. And thank her for wanting to meet me. Well, once again, I'm here talking about the Dr. Martin Luther King Center Park and Street Memorial. I have always said, and I stand with this, Dr. King stands alone. And we, excuse me. Excuse me. Dr. King stands alone. And we must recognize that. We must not disrespect his name. We must honor his name fully. This past week, I, I'm still on boots on the ground, I gathered another fifty more names to my petition. The people, they really want this to happen. The people, they really want this to happen. They want this statue. They want that name on the freeway. Like one lady says, every city I go through, Sebastian, on the freeway, it states, Dr. Martin Luther King, why Modesto? Why do we have to be so, I would say hard, but why do we have to be the one? My fellow councilmen and mayor, I urge you to change that name and honor Dr. King, not only on January 15th, but every day. Like I stated, most of the people think the Kennedy name is John F. Kennedy. We can put a plaque on the side of the building somewhere and honor Robert Kennedy. Let's truly honor Dr. King's name. I have to quit, I can't talk anymore.
All right, you take care.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any members of the public that haven't had a chance that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? All right, I don't see any. Oh, excuse me, Kevin McClardy.
Hi, Mayor, and members of the council. You know, before I get into what I wanted to talk about, I noticed a big change in the format here. No longer can we see the members' faces, the council members' faces, as we talk to them. I miss that. Now all we see is a big clock. I like to see the reactions on the faces of the council members as I'm talking. And I don't like this change. You know, just seeing a big clock, I don't get to see the reactions on the faces of the members. It's almost like hiding behind the clock, you know? I don't get to see your facial expressions as I'm talking. I don't like that. And I'm wondering if you would consider changing that. That's something new that you added since Saturday's meeting. The clock was at Saturday's meeting. I guess you decided to incorporate that into the regular council meetings. But I don't think that that's too cool. I would appreciate it if maybe you would put a little clock in the corner but leave the faces up so we can see the reactions of the members as we speak. Anyway, what I wanted to talk about was that, you know, I look at the agenda items on the agenda every week. And I never see any items that are brought up by citizens. I see consent items. I see items that are brought to the council by city staff. They're brought to their agenda by the city manager and his staff. I never see anything that anybody ever brings up at these, at public forum. And I'm just wondering, what happens to all of our ideas that we bring up? Because I never see them on the agenda. They're never there. I only see these consent items that are brought up by city staff, you know, for the members of the council to vote on. And they never have anything to do with anything that anybody ever brings up at the council meetings, you know, in terms of citizens. And I'm just wondering, if somebody would please tell me, what happens to our concerns? No one ever responds to them? I never see them in writing anywhere? The Minister B doesn't cover what we say? I mean, my heavens, we might as well just be talking into thin air. So I'd like a response on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Emerson Drake.
You know, I quite honestly can't believe what I'm seeing. I'm at a public meeting and I can't see any of it whatsoever. If this is a technical glitch, fine. But, you know, when we were there Saturday, I actually made a comment to a few people that having that time clock in the corner is nice. But every single individual that's watching, whether you're talking or not, can't see the council. Because this actually qualifies as a public meeting? I think the council seems to be taking things... I just don't know what to say. I'll let it go at that. We need to be able to see the council when anybody's speaking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Just wait a few minutes, see if anybody else raises their hand online. I don't see anyone. All right, so we will move on. Will the city clerk please read the consent items?
Item number six, consider approving the minutes from the May 11, 2021 council meeting. Item number seven, consider approving the Fourth Amendment to agreement with Property Specialists Incorporated for additional right-of-way services for the State Route 132 West Freeway Expressway Phase One project by $214,500 from $3,522,913 to a new total amount of $3,737,413. Item eight, consider approving professional services agreement to provide citywide occupational medicine services on an as-needed basis with OcuMed Limited for an annual estimated amount of $135,000 and Life Extension Clinics Incorporated for an annual estimated amount of $145,000. Item nine, consider approving the award of proposal and agreement for the furnishing of General Liability Claims Administration Services to George Hill's Company for an annual estimated cost of $400,000. Item 10, consider approving the extension of the abandoned vehicle abatement program fee until April 30, 2032. Item 11, consider approving a 20-year lease with the Federal Aviation Administration for the ground that their air traffic control tower is upon at the Modesto City County Airport. Item 12, consider authorizing payment to store transit systems in the amount of $221,646 for a fixed cost adjustment for the fiscal year 2019-2020 operation of Modesto Area Dial-A-Ride.
Will you approve all consent items?
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Councilmember Canoyer and a second from Councilmember Wright. Will the city clerk please do the roll call?
Councilmembers Madrigal.
Aye.
Ricky.
Aye.
Zalaki.
Aye.
Canoyer.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Eschusia Brayton.
Aye.
Mary Swollen.
Aye, the motion carries unanimously. Do any of the council members have any comments and reports? Councilmember Madrigal?
Yes, real quick, just wanted to, first of all, take the opportunity to thank staff again and also the public for last Saturday's listening session on policing here in Modesto. It was very encouraging to just see all that public engagement and participation. And I look forward to the next one, which I heard from staff was tentatively scheduled for June the 8th during one of our regular council meetings, where we'll be discussing the issue again. Also wanted to bring to, want to share with council, there's an idea that I'm, what's the word, remiss or whatnot, that I regret I hadn't brought back sooner during the standing committee input sessions about ways that we could, you know, best expand the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And the idea is something that I think could help our homeless populations and other populations. And that is to establish a municipal identification card system. I'm not too sure if it's very visible, but my current background shows right now on the screen is showing, I think, sort of like a mock-up of what it would look like. And I look forward to seeing this come back in one of the, at one of the future standing committee meetings. You know, if staff could research this and bring this back. Just wanted to ask the city manager, does that sound like something doable here in the next steps?
Sorry, yes, that is something we could take a look at and bring back at one of our future standing committees.
Sounds good. Thank you, city manager. Had something else, and as always, I can't remember. Thank you for now.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ricky?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm excited to keep talking about this national app competition. I'm really excited city of Modesto is going to be co-sponsoring the event. This event encourages high school students to create apps for phones, computers. And hey, Modesto can do tech, you know? And I can't wait to see what all our students come up with that's coming up. You know, this coming school year, so I'm super excited about it. I also want to thank staff and the city manager for not just listening, but consistently acting on suggestions from residents, whether it's talking about roller skating rinks or basketball hoop tickets or just talking about how we can improve policing in Modesto. It feels good to know that I can count on you guys to try to find solutions. And sometimes, maybe we'll even get it right. So don't give up, keep trying. We're going to get it right eventually, you know? I'm also just really, it's fantastic that we're streaming our meetings on YouTube now. So that's another way that you can connect with the council. I'm looking forward to seeing those meetings streamed on Facebook, Twitter, and kind of other social media as we can phase it in. So excited for that to happen. And making government easier to consume is kind of one of the most important things we can do to make sure that our community keeps moving forward. And finally, we just keep getting good news like the creation of a community development corporation in our county. This fiscal tool is going to attack like a lot of great, well, big local challenges like finding solutions to housing and homeownership for lower-income segments in our community. So these are things we've been working on for a long time. It's just really nice to see us making some progress. That's all I got today, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Scudia Brayton?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank my colleagues, my fellow councilmembers and mayor. We had a very successful two days of focusing at our council workshop where we established norms and had a conversation that ultimately ended up building a stronger, more dynamic, more efficient government all for the benefit of Modesto citizenry. And I'm honored to serve with my councilmembers and to do the good work of Modesto. So thank you all for taking time away to do that. It was fantastic. And also, thank the public who participated in Saturday's listening session. As others have already indicated, it was a tremendous success. And it really opened, it really said that we listened in the past and really wanted to make, just take the public's concerns seriously and move forward with a game plan that includes everyone's comments. And it was a wonderful process to be part of. Lastly, I just wanted to take a few seconds to acknowledge indeed that Monday is Memorial Day and encourage everyone to participate in the various Memorial Day online and in-person events. There's going to be, I know, a few events at cemeteries and wreath flames. And just a personal note of reflection and thank all the brave men and women who have chosen to serve, but in particular, those who have died in this honorable, honorably serving our country. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any, Councilmember Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers Zalaki and I was able to tour the new graffiti museum this week and seeing the future plans and the vision. And I'm excited, I think there's a lot of great things in the future for Modesto. We're going to be a destination that people are going to want to come to and spend their money and have a great time here in Modesto. I want to thank the organization, Chris Murphy and Mr. Sanders out there for all the hard work you guys are doing and CISO. I better say CISO or else I'll get in trouble. I'll get a phone call later. For all the hard work you guys are doing putting this together. And my hat's off to you. And the vision is unbelievable. It's going to be great. So thank you.
Appreciate that. I just have a couple of brief comments. I mainly wanted to discuss what Councilmember Scudia Brayton said, that on Thursday and Friday evenings, we spent several hours, both evenings, developing workshop norms and Council for Council Development. And then on Saturday, we had Forward Together, which was also very successful in listening to our community and what their desires are for our community. And we hope to, in the future, potentially have workshops, maybe fine-tuning even our agenda formats for these meetings and our committee meetings, as well as, for those of us that are new, reviewing our strategic plan and getting updated on that. So we're looking forward to that. I thought of something else. Councilmember Scudia Brayton and myself toured our wastewater management department. And that is something that is very interesting. When you, we spent four hours going from one part of Modesto, the east side, all the way out to Jennings Road. And to see where our water and flushes go throughout our city and how it is all taken care of becomes very personal, but yet is a machine. It's just so interesting. So if you ever are interested in that process, it's something that I would have never even thought twice about. But it takes a lot of effort for our faucets to work and for plumbing to work and the things that we just take for granted every single day. So I'm so proud of our staff. It was quite an experience and I appreciated that. So any other council member comments at this time or reports?
Yes.
All right, councilmembers Zalaki.
I just wanted to add, although most of the talking points I had have been mentioned. And the last, what that you brought up was our strategic plan. That was discussed on Thursday and Friday. Importance of that plan, the importance of understanding, identifying priorities. So when we get to a point of building our budget, it actually gives us a foundation that makes some sense. Looking forward to having that part of the discussion as a full city council. I really did appreciate Thursday and Friday. I thought it was very helpful. It gave us a chance to work together and share things together as a council. I think it was very profitable for each of us. And the same thing, our listening on Saturday was very good. It helped that we heard from a broad number of people. I completely agree with what Councilmember Scusia Brayton said, as well as you, Mayor, and all the other councilmen, the council people that mentioned Saturday. It was a great opportunity to hear from the community. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Canoyer?
I'm not going to drag this out because everybody has said, basically, what I was going to say. It's been very enlightening, having been on the council now eight years. Really learned and worked together as a council, which was very, very good. And I'm glad that Councilmember Scusia Brayton said about Memorial Day. It's probably not going to be like we're used to celebrating again. But hopefully, next year, we'll have all the outdoor things because our pandemic will be behind us. So anyhow, yes, I appreciate Thursday and Friday. Actually, I appreciate all the meetings and working with the council and the staff and everyone. It's always a learning, no matter how long you're on council, it's always a learning session for us. And I appreciate everyone and I appreciate working with everyone.
Thank you. Next, we will go on to item number 13. Consider an informational update regarding Spanish translation services at city council meetings and the potential use of MyTV26 Public Access Television Channel.
Before we do that, can I have another council, city manager comment, would you mind?
Sure.
Just real briefly, and just want to extend my thanks and gratitude to all the city staff who participated in the Modesto Center Plaza Vaccination Pod. Our staff once again showed, um, why they are the best staff, uh, any organization can have. They continue to rise to the occasion, uh, when they're needed the most. I'd like to recognize, uh, Fire Chief Alan Ernst, interim Chief Brandon Gillespie, Fire Division Chief Tim Teigen, who really took the bull by the horn and did everything that needed to be do, done to get the pod set up. So, uh, the staff from all the various departments throughout the city participated in, and it was truly a team effort, and just really want to express my gratitude and thanks to all of them. Thank you. Now we'll turn it over to Scotty.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Scotty Douglas, Deputy City Manager, and just wanted to give this update regarding the multilingual plan and the, uh, Spanish translation services. First, I want to acknowledge the, uh, comments that were provided by the public regarding the timer. I wanted to assure that, uh, essentially we're, we're trying to work through some of the technology and recognize that, and we recognize the Zoom, folks, we're unable to see the timer that was inside of the chambers. So we're providing, uh, a visual so that they could see and, uh, and manage their time. So we appreciate your patience with that. I did want to also note that Zoom does allow you to click or to slide over on your smart device to other views and vision and views of, uh, the council meeting, and so you should still be able to see video feed. Okay, so I'm gonna move on to our multi, uh, multilingual plan update. There's another technical issue we're working through. Your patience, we're just demonstrating that now. All right, thank you, Edgar. All right. So the background, we, we've gone over many of these bullet points already. The last I just wanted to just remind is that we, uh, provided an update to the council regarding the intended action items, and I'd like to go into those now. So we have a multi, uh, a multilingual action plan that we're working on. It's at the very beginning, so, but I did want to point out some of the main points that this covered. So the goals and objectives of this is to, for one, increase the access to city council meeting materials and discussions for those that are non-English speaking, and we want to be able to use the technology and partnerships to streamline the processes and, and also do the best that we can with what, uh, what it will cost. Next is using best practices and learning from other communities. So there's a lot of research that's going into this. We're looking at other communities, and it's interesting because you'll, you might come across one, you think, oh, that's exactly what we need to do here at the City of Modesto. Unfortunately, some of the technology may be incompatible. Also, we have to, uh, take into consideration our budgets. Also establishing, uh, internal standard operating procedures regarding the translation interpretation services. We want to make sure that we're doing this consistently across the board and we're delivering it in a fair and equitable way. And then the next is establishing what can be accomplished with the current resources. So, you know, you have to take a look, uh, at what is available and what could be done. And we also need to evaluate and adjust the accurate cost estimates for a full implementation. So it's gonna take some time. So there's kind of six areas here that, that are regarding this plan. We want to increase access to the city council meetings, materials, and discussions for non-English speaking residents. So these are the main points. So we're looking, we're looking at closed captioning via the government channel, and I'm gonna go into each of these a little bit, so just this is the overview. Uh, we're also looking at live stream captioning, cap, uh, translated captioning on the government channel, interactive translation services, archived format with captioning, which means replayable videos at a later point, and then translated council materials. So first is the closed captioning and translated closed cap, or Clint, I'm sorry, translated captioning on the government channel. So we're currently, as I've mentioned before, in partnership with Santa Claus County regarding closed captioning on the government channel. And that, they, there has been a vendor that's been hired to do this, and there's a lot of, uh, of coordination and technology behind the scenes to accomplish this. Uh, so the target date right now, uh, it is out there a little ways. It's December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. We're trying to obviously get that done sooner, but we're trying to be very realistic with our timeline. And also the budget is to be determined. Next is archived, uh, archived closed captioning. So captioning, there is, uh, uh, captioning available right now on YouTube. So we have, uh, been testing this on our YouTube channel. There is closed captioning on the replayable videos. So that's what that means, archived. You go click on it, you can play, you can play from a prior council meeting, and you'll see the closed captioning there. We also have, are in the process of redesigning our YouTube channel so that it's easy to follow and folks can easily find what they're looking for. And we're also, we've also developed a how-to resource guide that will help our residents and the visitors to our site be able to navigate how to turn on the captioning and then also for translation. Targeted completion of this is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, so as you have just heard, uh, and you're seeing at the bottom of your screen here some of the, the livestream. We'll, we'll go over that in just a moment. But, um, we're targeting a launch with online media, uh, marketing and, uh, social media launch, uh, by the end of the next month. Next is public access broadcasting. So you've heard a lot about, uh, MyTV26. We have, we have some folks here, uh, to speak on this. Appreciate you coming. And, uh, we've had some conversations with the, with everyone to just really kind of level set. Um, and to understand a lot more about MyTV26 and the potential partnerships that could be done there, we met with them on, uh, May eleventh, um, a member of the staff and a member of the board, and we've, uh, provide, they provided a very comprehensive overview of their operations, their infrastructure. They have a studio that we're going to be scheduling a tour, and we're also looking at potential future programming partnerships, maybe some replayability of some of the council meetings that we're storing on YouTube and maybe other things. And also the funding discussion. So leading into that, we did meet with, uh, some resources to discuss other jurisdictions and how they use the source of the public, uh, the PEG funds. I'm trying to think of what the name of that is. But, uh, those are the franchise fees that are collected, so they'll pay for infrastructure. And then also, uh, the next steps to evaluate the other cities and the use of public access television and potential partnerships such as Modesto City Schools. So I think that there is other opera, real opportunities here for some coordinated programming. And we're also, like I said, we're closer, uh, doing a closer evaluation of the use of the PEG funds at this point. It looks like it can only be used for infrastructure. We're determining whether or not those funds can, you know, how they can be used, uh, for, uh, nonprofit versus, uh, for city. Livestream captioning. So there's only one line here, but there's a lot behind this. So we tested this on May twenty-second on the listening session via, via Zoom. Yes, we're working, working through a couple of, uh, technical issues, uh, but it was, it tested, and it, it was completed. It did, it did pretty well. Um, I did notice that, uh, you know, when there were Spanish speakers, that it was not translating that, obviously, and what it was doing was it was trying to put up there what it thought was being said. So we had to go back and forth and turn it off and turn it on for those things. And so again, we're just kind of trying to work through some of those. Uh, we have interactive translation. So this is another one that we're, that we're looking at. The interactive translation, we have a person here at, uh, every council meeting now that can provide, uh, translation and interpretation. Um, and we're researching some additional alternatives, such as Saturday, we had a gentleman here that provided that formally, and, uh, we're looking at some other options here. Budget is also, uh, to be determined at the future. Next is translated council meeting materials. Um, this is easily said, but it's a very large workload that's behind this. Doesn't mean that things are impossible, but again, this just requires a lot of planning for us to really look at what are other jurisdictions, uh, able to do, and looking at the budget, um, to determine what could be, um, feasible. So the next steps are continuing the research of those best practices that I just spoke of, pursuing the potential partnerships such as MyTV26 and, uh, other opportunities that might be out there, such as the Modesto City Schools. Uh, continuing the implementation of the closed captioning and translation of the council meetings. We need to define, uh, options and anticipated costs for further implementation. As I had noted earlier and at the prior, uh, update, there are a lot of moving parts. And we're also, we're trying to work toward that final, final multilingual action plan that's going to be for adoption by council. With that, I would be more than happy to ask, answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, uh, questions from council members?
Yes, I have a question.
All right, Councilmember Lockete.
Actually, it's a, it's not a question, it's a statement. Um, recently I was on a, um, Zoom meeting, I, I believe it was Zoom. It could have been one of the others, but in any case, I'm sure the technology is identical. I was literally talking, um, with people through, across the United States, all the way over to the Ukraine. And for those in the Ukraine or those that were here that didn't speak English, uh, there was a button that lets you listen to the translation of a, of a translator so that you press the button based on your language, and all the buttons were available to everyone. So it, it's, it, there is a way of doing such a thing. Don't know exactly how it all works, but I just wanted to let you know, sometimes those things are uncovered when you know what you're looking for. And, uh, and, and that's all great. I, what you're talking about is, is, uh, great technology, and I think will be helpful to everyone. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions from council members? All right, we have two, uh, members of the public that would like to comment on this item. Deborah Dupree?
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you again for Saturday. It was, uh, very enlightening what we got to hear. As I stated on Saturday, I think MyTV26 would be a very good forum for the opportunity to hear what people have to say and to be able to give them more than three minutes and to give their, give their opportunity to people to speak. I also am involved in the homeless project, as you know, and, um, having the opportunity again to be the voice of the city council. So when the City Manager has something that they want to give out to the public, I believe that public access TV would be an opportunity for them to be able to give that information out. So when they say they don't have a way to have their voices heard and they don't have a way to get their ideas out, we are that voice. We are the public. We're public broadcast. As I said, we have a show called You Matter. Uh, I feel that this community could come together. They could, they could solve a lot of problems together because people, when they talk and they can communicate with each other, that's when things start to happen. That's when things can be solved. They can bring you better ideas as a collective. Instead of coming one at a time and trying to do it in three minutes, you have a bigger forum with our audience to be able to say, you know, we could maybe consolidate some of those ideas and bring them as a group. So, um, I like the idea. I hope that you will consider MyTV26 for, um, also events. You know, if you're gonna host an event like you did on Saturday, we could have put the flyers out. We could have got the information out to our audience. That's an opportunity missed. So, um, again, these are, these are just things that we've talked about, you know. People come to us from other locations. We put information out for people so they know where you are. They know you're having an event. If you're gonna offer things, uh, as far as a solution, I think we could be the voice for that as well. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate all you being here tonight, and I hope this isn't the last time we speak. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Emerson Drake?
Yes, I, first of all, I appreciate you clearing up the idea that this, this clock's not going to be here the whole time. And I appreciate the fact that you can make a little bit of an adjustment, but I can't seem to do it on my home computer, only on my phone. I'm sure people use both. But anyway, I just wanted to make that known. And I think the idea of using YouTube to archive the council meetings is fantastic, but I want to know if we could take it a step farther. I know the standing committees, we do an audio recording similar to what, you could call it almost a podcast, if you would. So is it possible that we could archive those so the public can access it rather than pre-COVID, when you had, when you had to go down and make arrangements to go listen to it in that room upstairs on the sixth floor? Just thought I'd throw it out there. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. How about Lynette Scott?
G'day, I'm Lynette Scott. Um, I've been involved with public access since it was Cable One with Sam Kness over on, I forget, Princeton. Um, so I did classes with Carol Lancaster Mingus, which were unfortunately taken away when those people, although they didn't go to four-year, they at least went to college. Anyway, I'm, I'm here in support of MyTV26 Public Access Channel, where you can create and expand your vision with public access television. I've bought some folders for you to learn a little bit more because there's a big history, and Chris Murphy was the first, um, president, so that's how long we've been going. Also, um, one of the projects I'd like to put forward after visiting with some friends in the downtown city. I've heard Chris Murphy and other people talk about how you want to expand people to come to, um, Modesto City. I parked where I thought was appropriate and not on the street and ended up with a seventy-dollar, um, fine for where I parked, which seemed to be a safe, and there wasn't a lot of others. So I'd like to do a video on the, um, signs you have to be clear how you can park safely besides the parking lots. I know they exist, and I would have used that if I knew what was going to happen. So that's a suggestion. But there are lots of other suggestions, and I really would like to work with people who have disabilities because we could have, have a small cooking show if we had the kitchen available for that, and a lot more. If you, um, look up on our YouTube and see Tiffany, she has, um, her show, and I was amazed because she's such a quiet young girl. I don't need to talk about, you know, what her, um, problems were, but just how much she popped after knowing her as a person. That could be everybody in, um, Modesto City and their stories. We could go to old people's houses or, um, you know, the residents, um, and do their stories with, there's just so much we could do in conjunction with what the city itself does. I'd like to give you the flyers that I had made.
Sure.
Thank you, and anybody in the public who would like it. Thank you for listening to me. I know there's a lot to take in.
Thank you. Uh, I see Richard Anderson?
Okay, hi, thank you. Yes, I really am excited hearing about the optimistic plans about expanding public access. I'd like to address a question that often is raised. How can we expect this little station to reach out so much when there are hundreds of TV channels and radio stations and more and all? And I think the answer is, those out there do not address Modesto things and show Modesto people, and that is what we need to expand. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Any other comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Hi, good evening, Council, members of the public, and, uh, City Attorney. Just wanted to mention and commend Scotty and their team, uh, Joe, Joe's team as well for the translation. I work for the Tuolumne River Trust and, um, definitely working in a lot of, uh, monolingual Spanish-speaking communities. So, uh, we've had a lot of different town halls and different information. So, uh, information as we are reaching out to both city and county. So it's great to see a multi-level action plan. I think one thing that we learned from COVID, meaning, um, that we were doing a lot of these meetings online and doing, uh, we did both simultaneous translation, which you have a, a button on Zoom, and you have a translator. And then we also did, uh, presentations where our staff, myself and my colleague would do English Spanish, English Spanish. So, um, there are those experiences we've seen from the community. So, there are those experiences we've seen from the community, not having a lot of different, not being technologically, just, you know, as savvy as we thought, so we're also learning along the way. So, we created different presentations of how to use a lot of different applications and tools online, specifically the Google platforms and such. So, those are one ways to kind of start to look at that, and how to reach the community. And so, we've been able to work alongside many community partners, working specifically in some of the, some of the projects relating to accessing the riverbanks. So, I think there's a lot that we could learn, I really definitely commend the city for taking a step forward, there's different options. I was also going to mention about whether it's a city employee, CRLA does offer interpreting trainings, and they do a wonderful job, they actually get certified, so that might be a way to think about whether an employee would essentially can become an interpreter, or maybe that be one of their roles within their job description, that might be something to consider. CRLA does a really great job, and this is, I think, their second go-around. So, my colleague was, just became certified last year. So, I think there's different ways to look at that, so I definitely commend the city, staff, and council members for some forward thinking, and other platform, I'm sorry, and other languages also could be considered, so I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public regarding this agenda item? All right, any comments from council members? Councilmember Ricky?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to really applaud our staff for getting together with my TV 26 on this. I believe that the future of communication in our community right now is going to, is going to ride on our ability to develop our own channels for communication. We've seen the Modesto B just slowly losing pages every single year, we've seen all of our television stations no longer keeping up offices in Modesto, and as a result of that, we have seen a massive drop in local news availability, and we, frankly, the ability for our residents to know what's going on in their own city. And so, I really like the fact that we are looking at the resources that we have available, and exploring them in a way that's going to take advantage of new technologies like YouTube, like Facebook, like Twitter. So, I just want to really give you guys an attaboy for, you know, for really working hard on this and trying some new things, and in the end, like, these translation services are going to get more of our residents involved in government, and that's going to be really helpful in terms of our ability to provide services more frequently. I just wanted to say thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other council member comments on this agenda item? Rosa, were you raising your hand? No. All right, I'll just make one comment. Thank you so much for this presentation. I will admit that I do not know how technology works, but I do know how to have grandchildren make it work for me.
That's right.
And they put the apps on my phone, and all I have to do is touch, and I get all the information that I need, and Facebook, and Twitter, and my Modesto B app, and I can read every single article with one little push in the Modesto B, and I really look forward to, to more information being out for our people and the public. It's very easy on Twitter, if you have a grandchild, to put the app on for you, and then you can access whatever news media you want, and it will just appear magically, and it's, it's very, very helpful, and I see this as a great step for our city in the future. So, this is a report only?
Yes.
Now, action needs to be taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is unfinished business, number 14. Consider approving angled parking on J Street from Ninth Street to 16th Street, and authorizing staff to issue a change order on the 2016 pavement rehabilitation project to install the striping. And we have Jalen French.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As was mentioned, Jalen French, Director of Community and Economic Development. The item before you is consideration of the council committee, Economic Development Committee's recommendation to maintain the current road configuration of J Street with the angled parking and narrower lanes. So, just a little background here, four years ago, a little bit more staff was contemplating various designs of J Street to accommodate more parking, and to create a bit of a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere in the downtown, specifically with a number of restaurants and retail stores along J Street. There was not consensus reached on, on what J Street could look like, would look like, and so, the council, in their wisdom, I believe, decided to fund a comprehensive downtown master plan. So, we have adopted that, the plan is, is now in its infancy in terms of implementation, but then along came the pandemic, and restaurants and other businesses at points in time were not allowed to use indoor spaces for their business. And so, the city, you know, really looked at opportunities for the businesses to be able to, to use outdoor spaces. And so, with the downtown master plan, some talks on J Street, and the pandemic all into consideration, staff redesigned J Street as a pilot project to, again, pick up about 21 parking spaces, create a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere, and allow businesses to utilize outdoor space, public right-of-way space, to support their customers. We knew at that time that that proposal could be temporary, because we had a slurry seal project forthcoming this spring. That is now about a month away, or actually, a week or so away, and so, the EDC made a recommendation to maintain the current striping with this new slurry seal project to include the angled parking in the narrower lanes. And so, this item before the full council is, is to consider that recommendation. So, I can, I can just speak to the input that we have heard, it's been very well received so far. The businesses have seen a slowdown in traffic, they've seen and heard less noise, have had more pedestrian interactions at their businesses. We have specifically polled 24 businesses, phone calls or in-person meetings, 22 of the 24 businesses were very much in support of the current configuration. Two were not. One of those businesses has been addressed by not extending the angled parking and the narrower lanes on the block in which that business is located, and the other one just had kind of general comments about the downtown and other matters. But really broad support from the public, from the businesses, in terms of, of this pilot program and, and moving forward. So, here is a, a general look at what it looks like. We, we see it every day as we drive by, but you, again, in narrow lanes, you create more space for parking. As I mentioned, we pick up 21 parking spaces. This will be extended another couple of blocks, and we'll pick up another, you know, dozen or so parking spaces. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions that the council or the public may have.
All right, any questions from council members?
I have a comment.
All right.
Yeah, I've, lately I've been going downtown, I go downtown a lot and eat, but in the evenings, I've noticed it seems like there's twice as many people out in the restaurants, and just the activity is just tremendous down there. I'm looking forward to getting lights in the trees at night, so it really brightens that up, but I think staff has done a great job on looking at this. I'm hoping that more restaurants that are on J and 10th expand out into the areas that we're going to let them expand, because I think it just really brings a lot of excitement in the area, and it makes people want to come downtown, so they've done a great job.
Any questions? Councilmember Madrigal?
I just wanted to appreciate staff's effort. Relatedly, wanted to say that, I wanted to bring you to your attention, there's a related policy in downtown that I think could also help with some of these enhancements and improvements that we're hoping to bring to fruition here in the coming months, and, and the one particular policy that is currently on the books, it's a building code that prohibits things such as banners or whatnot to be strewn across city downtown streets, such as, for example, on J Street from, say, building to building. You know how, for example, when you go to another, say, another city, and through their downtown, they'll have a big banner that says, you know, "County Fair in the coming months," or they'll say, you know, "Farmer's Market's reopening," or something. Our city of Modesto Code currently prohibits that, and I'd like to see that be brought back for council discussion at a future date, as, as we look at other things that we're improving downtown, and, and then hopefully, we can, we can do things such as advertise events downtown, or even stro, you know, string, you know, decorative lighting across downtown, just to piggyback on what Councilmember Wright was talking about. Similar to, for example, what we already see in front of that 10th Street block in front of City Hall, just have those, those kind of lights strewn all throughout, say, J Street and some of our other main corridors in downtown, to really lighten up the place, beautify downtown, and that's it. Thanks.
Any further questions from council members?
I have a question, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Scudia Brayton?
Thank you very much. Why this stop at 16? Does it have something to do with that's the city jurisdiction on J Street before it impedes a state roadway? Or why, why this stop at 16? Why not vote to McHenry?
Yeah, that is, that is certainly part of it, so as you mentioned, McHenry is, is still State Route 108, that is Caltrans facility is not our facility. I think another piece is to, what do I want to say, taper down, so it's, you know, not coming right off of, of McHenry into a narrower facility, it's to provide some time to, I guess, narrow traffic. Not exactly what I want to say, but I think you get the point.
Well, well, to that end, to what you just said, will there be, will they, will there be signage previous to the angled parking that says, "You are approaching blah, blah, blah"?
So, we have considered such things in the interim, we're, we're working with a couple of our departments to, to try to really divert through traffic off of J Street. The traffic that's looking to get to the freeway from McHenry, we, we do want to divert those off of, off of J Street, and so, we will have message boards, and in a couple years, we expect to do sort of a full project on J Street. This is just a slurry seal, a little pavement treatment that we're able to put some striping on, so it's, it's temporary in nature, but in a couple years, we should have a full Mezorell project to, if the council still chooses, to fully implement this, and, and so, we'll consider both long-term signage, but also temporary signage, to try to divert the through traffic off of J Street.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmembers of Lucky?
Just real quick, Jalen, I, I think you're right on with the plan here, this is, as you said, temporary, which is perfect, we just need to fix the striping, and so that traffic can understand it, because there's old striping that's still there, there's a lot of stuff that makes it confusing, and to get that fixed would be a big public safety improvement. And as you said, when we move into the next, I'd say, phase two of J Street, as well as perhaps 10th Street, and Ninth Street, and 11th Street, and who knows, maybe down to 14th if we, if we're able to do it, fixing our sidewalks and changing all of that to improve our pedestrian access, as well as bike access that could be coming into downtown. So, that, it, it makes sense what you're doing, I just wanted to acknowledge, I think you're doing it the right way, very supportive.
All right, any other questions from the council members for staff?
Mayor, if I just might, oh, well, you know what, no more questions, I'll wait for comments, I'm sorry.
All right, we will open this up to the public, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on this agenda item? I do not see any, okay, you may step right up.
Just quickly, because what I said before, will you, what about the parking that's off-road, but whether it's private or not, the way it's kind of described, doesn't make it clear that you're not supposed to park there? Does that get included in this plan?
All right.
I would, I'm going to refer you to Scotty Douglas, who could take your information so we can get the specific areas you're referencing, so we can check out the signage and make sure it's appropriate.
All right, thank you. All right, any comments from council members? Councilmember Scudia Brayton?
Thank you, Mayor Verach. Down, the beautification of downtown is just, I, it's my personal opinion that it's the top of the majority of Modesto's topics of interest. I would encourage Jalen and the team to consider making, providing an update to that effect, if not at every council meeting quite often. Just because I know the staffs were very diligently to do all kinds of improvement that's in downtown, I think would be lovely if we had a mechanism to communicate that good work that's being done downtown to the public on a frequent, ongoing basis. That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Madrigal?
Okay, hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I, I just want to say I wholeheartedly concur with Councilmember Scudia Brayton, I, I thank her, I just want to recognize a good job when I, I mean, a really great idea when I hear one, and I'm personally kicking myself, why didn't we think of this sooner? A, a regular update on downtown beautification from henceforth would be wonderful.
All right, any other comments from council members? Seeing none, can I call for a motion?
Roll approval, second.
So, we have a motion by Councilmember Wright, second by Councilmember Ricky, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Madrigal?
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Zalaki?
Aye.
Canoyer?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Escudia Brayton?
Aye.
Mayor Swallow?
Aye, so this passes unanimously, thank you very much. All right, we will go on to item number 15, hearing to consider the annexation of Metro at the Village, assessor parcel number 085-040-063, and icon at the Village, assessor parcel number 085-007-009, to City of Modesto Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Village 1, number 2, authorizing the levy of special taxes there, and calling for a, calling a special election, and declaring the results of the May 25, 2021 special election.
Great, thank you. Mayor, City Council, Jessica Hill, Community Development Manager. So, now's the time that has been previously set in notice for the public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of additional property to the City of Modesto Community Facility District, number 2004-1, Village 1, number 2, the approval of special taxes to be levied within and related matters. The approval of special taxes to be levied within and related matters. Mayor, before you formally open the hearing, I would like to ask if there are any property owners or persons registered to vote within the Community Facilities District who wish to file written protest and have not already done so. If so, they must be filed with the clerk now. There being none, will the clerk please report as to whether the notice of public hearing has been properly provided and whether the Community Facilities District report prepared by Goodwin Consulting Group describing the Community Facilities District has been received?
Yes, notice of the hearing has been published in accordance with law. The owners of the land within the Community Facilities District have acknowledged notice of the hearings and have consented to the proceedings. And the Community Facilities District report has been filed with the City Council and a copy of it is available for the public.
Mayor, the hearing may now be officially opened.
All right, we will open the hearing.
So I just wanted to give council and the public a little bit of background regarding a Melrose district. So the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982 was enacted by California to provide a flexible funding mechanism to local governments. What this does is it raises money through special taxes that must be approved by a two-thirds vote within the district. A community facilities district is formed to help finance major improvements due to new construction within the City of Modesto. Some of these improvements include roadways, storm drain facilities, pump station, parks, median and roundabout landscaping or bike trails. A CFD can choose to seek public financing through the sale of bonds or the purpose of financing certain public improvements and services. If bonds are issued, they're secured by special taxes levied on property owners and billed on the property tax bills annually. So a little bit of background regarding Village 1, number 2. Village 1, number 2 funds various infrastructure improvements, the maintenance of parkways and open space, and the maintenance repair of the storm drain basin. So Village 1, number 2 has three types of taxes. They have a one-time facilities tax collected at building permit issuance, and an annual maintenance, and an annual facility special tax, which is collected through the property taxes. So on January 6, 2021, SB Builders, the owner of approximately 5.35 acres, located on Shandon Drive, north of Montero Drive, south of Floyd and east of Village 1 Plaza, otherwise known as Metro of the Village, and they are also the owner of 3.75 acres at Sharon Avenue, south of Yellowhammer Lane, and west of Claus Road, otherwise known as Icon of the Village. And they filed a petition and application package requesting both properties be annexed into CFD number 2001 or Village 1, number 2. So before you are the proposed boundary maps of the two parcels that are looking to be annexed today. To the left is the Metro at the Village, and to the right is the Icon of the Village. On the table before you, it outlines the special taxes associated with these properties. And so you see that the special taxes associated for the Metro of the Village are about $157,324 in facilities. And the maintenance and facility special taxes, which are collected annually, are $8,371 and $9,914 respectively. For the Icon of the Village, the facility special tax is $46,964, and the maintenance is $2,500 a year, and the facilities is $8,792 per year. So Mayor, now would be the appropriate time to take questions and receive any comments from persons interested in the proceedings.
All right, are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, are there any questions from the public or comments? Seeing none, any comments from council members? All right, we can proceed.
Great. Has the city clerk received any written protest to any of the matters addressed in these public hearings from any registered voters or landowners of more than 50% of the acreage located in the Community Facilities District?
No, we have not received any protest.
Mayor, if there's no further comments from the public or members of the City Council, the public hearing can be closed.
All right, public hearing is closed.
Great. Has the city clerk conducted the election for the Community Facilities District?
Yes, the results of the election for APN 080, 040, 063 are six votes in favor, four and zero votes opposed. And the results for the election for APN 085, 007, 009 are four votes in favor, four and zero votes opposed. That's a total of 10 votes in favor, four and zero votes opposed for annexation number 19. The proposition has passed unanimously. They have completed and filed a certificate as the result of the campus of the election results.
Thank you. So Mayor, now would be the appropriate time to ask for a motion approving the resolutions.
All right, we have two resolutions. Resolution, the first one is resolution calling a special election for the annexation of additional territory to City of Modesto Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Village 1, number 2. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the resolution. Zalaki.
All right.
I'll take a second.
All right, move by Councilmember Zalaki, second by Councilmember Canoyer. May I ask for a?
Councilmembers Magical?
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Zalaki?
Aye.
Canoyer?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Escutia Brayton?
Aye.
Mayor Swallow?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Number, resolution number 2, declaring the results of the May 25, 2021 special election and ordering the annexation of the additional territory to City of Modesto Community Facilities District, number 2004-1, Village 1, number 2.
So moved.
Move to approve the second resolution, Zalaki.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Scutia Brayton, seconded by Councilmember Zalaki. May I have a roll call?
That's fine.
Councilmembers Magical?
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Zalaki?
Aye.
Canoyer?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Escutia Brayton?
Aye.
Mayor Swallow?
Aye. Passes unanimously. I am going to recommend that we take a five-minute break, get up and stretch, and five minutes we will return. Thank you. All right, we will resume the meeting. We are at item number 16. That, that one I still need.
He's not going to speak.
Oh, you got it. All right, thank you.
We're reaching out to him.
And then this, item number 16. Hearing to consider the applications of NorCal ambulance and Sacramento Valley ambulance and issuing each entity a permit to operate as non-emergency medical transport services in the City of Modesto. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brandon Gillespie, our police chief with the Modesto Police Department. Mayor, as you stated, this is going to be a hearing to consider the non-emergency transport applications for both NorCal ambulance and Sacramento Valley ambulance. The city, they both operate as non-emergency medical transport companies, and they are, this is being forwarded to you, the City Council, for recommended approval. The city allows non-emergency transport companies to apply for non-emergency transport permit in the City of Modesto. The application process of the transport companies require them to pay a thousand-dollar fee to provide all necessary documents and information as outlined in the municipal code 3-9. And then once all that application documentation and the fees have been paid, the Modesto Police Department conducts a background investigation, determine if they meet the requirements of the municipal codes. And upon successful completion of the background investigation, approval by the City Council is required. So after approval, if that is approved tonight, that the Modesto Police Department will then issue both of these ambulance companies permits. Currently, there are six permitted ambulance companies in Modesto to provide non-emergency transport. That's AmWest Ambulance, Bay Medic Transportation, Citizens Medical Response, Falcon Critical Care, Murphy Medical Transportation, and Star Non-Emergent Transportation. So the Modesto Police Department has concluded the background investigations on both of these companies, NorCal ambulance and Sacramento Valley ambulance, and they have both complied with the municipal codes 3-9. And it is my recommendation that the City Council proceed with approving ambulance permits, non-emergency ambulance permits for both of these companies.
Great, thank you for that report. Any questions from council members of staff? Seeing none, any comments or questions from the public regarding this agenda item? Is there anyone online? I don't see. Okay, thank you. Any comments from staff, or excuse me, from council members?
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Ricky.
Second.
Second, second from Councilmember Wright. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Magical?
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Zalaki?
Aye.
Canoyer?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Escutia Brayton?
Aye.
Mayor Swallow?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is new business. Item number 17, consider and review the draft budget as submitted by the city manager with the mayor's final budget modifications and combining the documents into the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2021-22, and noticing a public hearing to be held on June 22, 2021 for the council's consideration and adoption of the fiscal year 2021-22 proposed budget and related actions. Welcome, Mr. Christensen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members. That's a mouthful for this item. But tonight, again, we're going to be, it's really kind of a procedural item required by the charter. We're going to go through and look at the, kind of do an overview of the proposed budget, and then look at the mayor's final budget modifications as well as setting a hearing date for the adoption meeting. So again, looking at the City of Modesto Charter, section 1303. So the mayor is required to prepare and deliver final budget modifications, if any, to the draft budget, which was presented to the Finance Committee in April at least 30 days prior to the new fiscal year. Following receipt of those final budget modifications, the council shall consider and review those changes and make any recommendations. And then the resulting of that document, so the final budget modifications through the budget message and the draft budget will result in the proposed budget. After that, council shall determine the time for holding of the public hearing for the proposed budget, for the adoption of that proposed budget. And it shall be noticed to the public not less than 10 days prior to said hearing. And then at the time of the public hearing, as determined by council on the proposed budget, any interested persons desiring to be heard shall be given that opportunity at that adoption hearing. So before we get into all that, again, I want to talk about what we did in terms of the fiscal year 21-22 budget balancing strategies. We're going to focus on the general fund at this point. So going into the budget, we had total revenues of $146.7 million, total expenditures of $164.1. We had a variance rate of 5%, which resulted in about $6 million in savings at the beginning when we did the budget process and developing the budget with the departments. So we were looking at an estimated shortfall of $11.36 million. In that orange section to the right, these are the adjustments and the reductions that we had proposed going into and the reductions that we had proposed going into the Finance Committee budget hearings and budget workshops in April. So we had additional revenues of two point one million. We had some vacant positions that we either eliminated or froze for the fiscal year, and there was twenty of those, for two point three-one million in savings. We had discretionary reductions across the departments for eight hundred thousand dollars in savings. We also had rate reductions for the workers' compensation, Internal Service Fund, and the Employee Benefits Internal Service Fund at twenty-five percent, so that resulted in about two million dollars across those two areas. And then, through the Finance Committee, there were some actions that were approved for some adjustments to the Parks, Recreation and Neighborhood Department, the Fire Department, and the Finance Department. That resulted in expenditures of about a hundred thousand dollars. So there's total adjustments of seven point one-seven million, which reduced the remaining shortfall down to about four point one-nine million. The remainder of that four point one-nine million is being made up of revenue losses and COVID-19 related expenses in the new fiscal year. That will be made up through the American Rescue Plan funds. So I'm gonna go into a little bit more detail about what that orange section is in terms of making up those different areas. So on the proposed reductions and adjustments, we had additional revenue from the Fire Department and the Community and Economic Development Department. There is a first responder insurance recovery that's making up most of that. This is something that will be brought forward to council at a future committee meeting and then to a council meeting. We've adjusted that revenue down to account for it not becoming possibly into effect through council action later in the fiscal year. We had Fire Department savings, freezing of two vacant firefighter positions, freezing of a vacant senior firefighter, fire inspector position that resulted in savings of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Police Department had a number of savings across their department, discretionary reduction savings of three hundred and seventy-two thousand. There was vacant positions that were eliminated, police cadet positions, or excuse me, police cadet positions that were eliminated, freezing of community service officers, there was three of those, freezing three police support specialist positions, the elimination of a senior admin office assistant, and then freezing two police officer positions, a sergeant position, a captain position. Again, all of these positions that we're talking about in this area and the next slide are vacant positions. No filled position was eliminated. So total reductions to the Police Department, one point eight-nine million. Looking at Parks and Recreation, there was the freezing of a cultural services manager position and the reduction of water and utility expenditures. In the Community and Economic Development Department, there was a freezing of a associate planner position. And then, again, in human resources, internal service funds, there was the rate reductions that we spoke about earlier. Other general fund departments had discretionary savings. We also had, in this Office of the City Auditor, vacancy savings from those positions that are still vacant in that area. Now, please note that these are vacancy savings. We are not eliminating these positions. These positions are still allocated, so when it's time to fill those positions, when the council's ready to fill them, those positions will be ready to be filled. They're not eliminated. These are just the savings that we're anticipating in next fiscal year until they are filled. So again, total revenue and expenditure savings, seven point two-nine million. But again, on the next slide, we'll see some adjustments that were approved through the Finance Committee. So the Fire Department have requested some ALS upgrades for three positions for paramedic pay, supplies, and maintenance, and some certifications, so that was a cost of forty-eight thousand dollars, but it is offset by some increased revenue from the contract with the county. So that actually resulted in seventy-eight hundred dollars in revenue. The Finance Department had one financial analyst position, that's a limited-term position, being added to their department, but that is offset with revenue coming in to cover that cost of that position through direct charge revenue, so that it is being fully funded. So there is no cost of adding that position to the general fund. And then, Parks and Recreation had three requests for marketing enhancement for recreation programs and facilities, the Lucidity software implementation. That is a program that is used by Public Works and Utilities, which will greatly benefit the Parks and Recreation Department for some enhancements to their efficiencies that they can gain with that implementation. And they also requested a fund development strategy and implementation plan for twenty thousand dollars, so that was a cost of a hundred and fifteen thousand. Total net of all of these adjustments was a hundred and seven thousand, so again, that combined with the reductions was about seven point one-seven million in savings. What all this meant was that, basically, when we got to the end of it, we had a balanced budget that was presented through the general fund. Now, talking a little bit about the non-general funds, I want to show a breakdown of all of our proposed non-general fund areas. So this is going to cover the Internal Service Funds, our Enterprise Funds. These are the proposed dollar amounts for those different areas. Internal Service Funds, that's going to include things like the IT Fund, the Workers' Compensation Fund, liability insurance, property insurance, the Employee Benefits Fund, basically all of our Internal Service Funds. One thing to note on the Transit Fund, that is something that is in talks right now, possibly joining up as a JPA, so that is one area that, while it is budgeted right now in our proposed budget, we could have an addendum of those funds going away because they could become part of the Transit JPA for the Regional Transit Authority that is being proposed. That will be coming to council at a later time for action. In the other funds area, that is made up of various other funds across the city. I know it looks like a large amount, but it's made up of our capital improvement support, which is about five point seven million. Our CDVG and HUD funds, between the two of those, is about two point seven million. Our debt service funds, which is about five point seven million, and then our parking fund as well, which is about one point seven million. Also included in there is all of our CFD funds, which make up a majority of that other fund allocation. You have our surface transportation funds, solid waste funds, storm drain fund, Gulf and Center Plaza as well. So total non-general fund areas are three hundred and twenty-four point seven million. So the city of Modesto has quite a large budget, about four hundred and seventy-seven million in total funds, including the general fund. Our budget process timeline, I just want to go over this briefly, just to kind of show you how we got to where we are at this point. October through January, that's when the operating budgets are created through the departments, working in coordination with the Budget Division and the City Manager's Office. February through March is when the capital and non-capital budgets are created and the operating budgets are refined. April, we had the Finance Committee Budget Workshops. We presented the draft budget. Those were held April nineteenth through the twenty-second. In May, that leads us to this meeting right now. We're looking at the mayor's final budget modifications, the combining of the draft budget to the proposed budget. We hope to set the budget adoption hearing date tonight. And then, in June, we hope to have that hearing to adopt the proposed budget for the new fiscal year on June twenty-second, if council approves that tonight. Now, going forward, I would like to introduce the mayor and have her go forward and read her budget message for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thank you very much. So to the citizens of Modesto and the members of the City Council, it is with great honor and respect that I present for your consideration the proposed fiscal year 2021-22, operating a multi-year budget for the city of Modesto. This budget reflects a coordinated effort between the city manager, city staff, and myself, and is guided by the policies and priorities set forth in the city's strategic plan. Modesto is in a period of transition, as it moves out of the economic downturn and the challenges brought on by COVID-19 pandemic. While this health emergency and economic decline is not yet over, the city is making its way toward recovery. The operating budget presented here is balanced through a number of revenue increases, discretionary reductions, position reductions, and the use of the American Rescue Plan Act and those funds. The total proposed operating budget is four hundred and seventy-eight million dollars. Of this, one hundred and fifty-three point two million is allocated to the general fund. In the proposed budget, the city's general fund was facing a shortfall, with expenditures exceeding revenues by eleven point three-six million dollars. Throughout the budget building process, departments were faced with analyzing current staffing and expenditure budgets while maintaining levels of service, a challenging task under any circumstances and made only more so with the financial stresses our city has faced this past year. The amount set forth in the proposed budget include freezing and/or eliminating twenty vacant general fund positions, which continues the city's efforts to strategically reduce the workforce wherever efficiencies can be gained. Staffing continues to be an area of focus as we move to effectively deliver services, while also balancing the future impact of pension costs. In March, President Biden signed into law the American Rescue Plan Act. This will provide forty-five point nine million dollars in funds to the city of Modesto. This will be critical funding that will assist the city as it moves out of the economic downturn of the pandemic. A comprehensive plan for the use of these funds is being developed with council and community input, to ensure that the city will make the best use of the money, not only for immediate needs, but to have the greatest lasting impact. As mayor, the charter dictates that I prepare and deliver to the council any final budget modifications to the draft budget. At this time, I have no modifications and recommend that the draft budget be moved forward for consideration by the council in June as the proposed budget. The proposed budget is a fresh start and a new beginning for the city of Modesto. I look forward to a continued successful collaboration with my council colleagues and to the continued partnerships with individuals and organizations throughout the city to address issues like homelessness, blight, economic development, affordable housing, and forward together. Thank you to our council, staff, and community for the support I have received as mayor of our city. I sincerely appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And before I go into actually reading the staff recommendation, I would like to answer any questions that the council might have.
Steve, on the Transit Funds, I thought it was twenty-seven, is it twenty-seven million or twenty-two million?
So the twenty-seven million that was shown on the slide, it includes all of our Transit Funds.
Right, and that's gonna be transferred over to the JPA, right?
Yeah, so some of the funds will stay with the city, so majority of them are going over into the JPA as the JPA operates, but some of them are remaining with the city to cover some existing projects, existing grants, and things like that.
And where do those funds usually come from? The general fund, or do they come from?
So most of them are federal and state funds, so they're not general fund dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
And just as a point of clarification, we'll be bringing an item on June twenty-second to codify all the different agreements related to the transit operation.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions from council members?
I have a question.
Oh, sure. Councilmember Zalaki? Is that, who's, okay.
Thank you, yes. Hi, Stephen, just some reviews on a couple of the items, and we may need to bring the slides up. We could go in first to the section that includes the public safety reductions.
Okay.
There it is. That looked... Now, I'm looking online. There's a little bit of delays, so I apologize for that. But I want to start out with, with first, our proposed adjustments to the Police Department and the vacancies that are being created with the offsetting impacts because of the vacancies that come as a credit. But many of these positions are those that we have been talking about, well, particularly on Saturday, the impacts of creating a... Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I have a better screen, but delays, it's not on real time as my iPhone is, sorry. Anyway, the, the impacts of service officers, our public service officer, the PSOs, with those reductions, it reduces our ability to impact and treat perhaps our mental ill, our, those that are homeless, and other sorts of things that we don't really need to always have a sworn officer attend to. And I know we have a problem right now. I'm not suggesting doing anything wrong. I'm suggesting, as a council, we should be considering, what are we gonna do to fix issues that we're having to react right now, remove officers that are, and public service officers that are very vital to addressing our problems that are so dominant. And we're hearing, I'm hearing, I'm sure all of the council members are, hearing from community members that are concerned about those, those particular issues that seem to be rising up. And on top of that, the Fire Department, they are struggling. We've taken a significant amount also out of the Fire Department, Fire Station One is in, is in significant disrepair. We're not even talking about that at this point. So what I'm suggesting is, to the council, to those that will listen and consider it, is we need to work on a opportunity of coming up with permanent funding for those special need projects that affect public safety. And I think we can have that conversation as a council, but I want to highlight it now at this opportunistic time, because we're talking about whole budget. If we remain at a reduced level of funding because of a protracted recovery or correction in the economy in the future, it would be a good time to have some alternatives out there and look at it. And so, I, it's, it's worth repeating that we have a crisis. We bent it through this not that long ago, when we had the last economic collapse, different than COVID, and certainly not quite as quickly it happened, but certainly the reaction was much deeper in the amounts because of the recovery that, that we had was so, so, so long in, in being able to see the end of it. We had so many houses that went vacant, and significantly impacted a bedroom community like, like Modesto and all the cities in Stanislaus County. But in any case, it is important for us to be thinking about how are we going to address these problems, and, and working with those on staff to bring in all of the considered methods of solving it. So that's, that's my comments. And Stephen, if you have some, some thoughts on that, I certainly would be willing to hear what your thoughts are, because you have a good grasp of these numbers.
I don't know if I have any comments, because you, you do speak to a larger issue, but I will say that on at least some of these positions, we are freezing them for a year, so they are not being eliminated, like the CSOs and the police support specialists, even the officers and sergeant and captain positions. So they will only be frozen for the year, so they will be positions that will be coming back to the budget next fiscal year. And the reason we are doing that, because we do understand that these are very important positions to the Police Department, the organization overall. So because we're freezing them for a year, that allows us to evaluate the impact going into the next fiscal year, and then, when we go into budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, really analyze whatever those impacts were during the year, and then add those positions back into the new budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. And again, with them being frozen, they're not eliminated during the year, so if it becomes something that the council does want to prioritize during the fiscal year, and we need to find funding for those during the year, that is something that can be brought back to council.
And I'll also...
And that's the, and that's the important part that you just said. We can bring it back. The position still exists, but if our improved line doesn't improve, we're still gonna have the same problem in the future.
And Councilmember Zalaki, I'll just elaborate a little bit on that part. In, in our next item, we're gonna talk about the And our next item, we're going to talk about the American Rescue Plan Act and how that plays into it, and we also have the Forward Together initiative. We expect there's going to be some changes and, but it is worth mentioning that the American Rescue Plan Act is one-time funding and can't fund ongoing expenses. And so we know we have our work cut out for us to continue to look at how much revenue we're bringing into the city and how we're going to make the necessary adjustments. And I'll just remind everybody, as we went through an exercise last year and we had a consultant come in, they clearly identified that we have too many full-time equivalent employees in our organization to sustain our current revenue base. And that is just a fact as we've struggled with our budget for years, and that is one of the root causes of this. So we need to continue to look at strategic ways where we can reduce those costs, but also use strategic investments through the ARPA plan to make sure that we can have sustainable future.
Yeah, and as you said, Joe, these are one-time funds, although they're coming over a two-year period from the ARPA, whatever that acronym is. And the, so you're right, we have to look at, we have to come up with solutions, and I'm not suggesting that there aren't some solution. But long-term viability without having an improved cash flow for our city is not going to give us long-term sustainability. And I've heard it with a number on the council, part of this is the inability to have an income stream coming into the city to pay for the services that we need to have a strong city. We're at eighty percent of our general fund going towards public safety. And it's not because we're overusing the general fund, it's because we're underserved by those dollars that are available to service public safety. So, yeah, thank you very much, I understand what you're saying.
All right, any more, okay, this is question time from council members before we go to the public, Councilmember Madrigal.
I was encouraged by some of the revenue funding from the, you know, responder calls, insurance recovery. Do we have just a rough projection of how much do you expect to bring in per year? Apologies if you covered that already and, you know, I just, I didn't catch some previous, you know, budget presentation or whatnot, but that was very encouraging. I remember when we first discussed this as a council and the chief first, you know, was briefing us individually on his proposal. We tried to bring that to us as a potential revenue source to help pay for, you know, service costs.
Yes, so that's a good question. So on the budget that we have presented right now in the proposed budget, it's one point six million. Again, with that dollar amount that we're proposing, we're anticipating that, you know, by the time we bring it forward to council for approval, it will probably be around, you know, September in that time period. So that one point six million dollar amount represents, it only coming online or being approved by September, so it's only a part of the year. Annual revenues, we're estimating about two point one million. So again, that one point six million dollar amount in this budget is adjusted for it not being in effect until September.
And then just follow-up question, I report more just a quick comment. I just, I just have this general feeling like, I guess I wanted to ask either you or the chief about, it just feels like we are reducing some, you know, overall police force. And I just want to know, like, are we or are we not, or are we, how is that being impacted as far as our, the number, the amount of staffing in our police department?
I will have Chief Gillespie come up to answer that, he's coming right now.
Good evening, Mayor, and Council, and Brandon Gillespie, our police chief. Councilmember Madrigal, all those current positions are vacant. And so we wouldn't actually be reducing our police force from what we have right now, but we would be holding those positions vacant. A few are being eliminated as we restructure how we do work specifically with that admin analyst. But those are current positions that we do not have filled currently right now. So we will just be holding those and won't be going down any further than we are right now, if that answers your question.
So if like, if a constituent says, are you guys planning police or you're not planning police, or are you guys maintaining, like, what's the quick answer, what do we say?
Well, we're freezing positions, like you said, we'll reestablish, as Steve said, through the next fiscal year. If there's opportunities to bring those positions, unfreeze those positions, then we could come back to the council for that. But, I mean, ultimately, the number that we're operating with will be technically lower than the allocated resources that we had. But we will still be maintaining the current service levels that we have right now because those positions are vacant.
Okay, there.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions from council members? All right, any comments?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, who was that?
That's all right, that's all right. I'm going to have the chief come back just to clarify something, if he doesn't mind.
He's on his way.
Thank you.
I've been sitting all day, so I need to get my steps in anyway, so thank you.
There you go. Real quick, so we're at what, about a hundred ninety-nine right now?
Yeah, we're about a hundred and ninety-nine sworn positions right now.
And two thousand eight, two thousand eight, our peak, what were we at?
We were up near three hundred, we were oh eight, oh nine, I think we're right about two ninety-two, two ninety-four, somewhere in that area.
So we're easily ninety difference in where we were at the peak. We then have Proposition, excuse me, Prop forty-six, or fifty-seven, forty-seven and fifty-seven that were passed that have significantly impacted us with homeless and others coming out of the state prison system, as well as AB one oh nine, which allotted a significant number of parolees being transferred someplace other than state prison where they resided at that time, as well as the mental health issues that come along with everything that's been going on since the great recession of oh six, oh seven. All of those things piled up on top of what, where we are right now. How much time do police officers have to dealing with issues of mental health and other kinds of things? How much do our sworn officers, one, appreciate doing, how would I say that, do they like doing that? Is it something they enjoy doing? Are they able to keep up with the workload that they have right now? Are they not able to keep up with the workload because workload substantially dominates everything that they're doing over time going significantly higher, wear and tear on the officers, the strain on their own family and personal things, is all of that okay?
So that was a lot, but I will try to summarize the best I can, I think I get the gist of what your question is. But, yeah, it has been a struggle since the great recession when we significantly decreased our sworn staffing. As you know, last fiscal year, the allocation went from two hundred and forty down to two hundred and ten, and then we currently have about ten, eleven vacancies as we sit right now. So as we look at Modesto, as long as I've been here, almost twenty years, has always been a very busy city. And that is something that actually people that work here and people that fit in with our city enjoy being busy and are very hard workers, so I think our employees do enjoy being busy and they do enjoy the work that they do. But obviously, there comes a time when it is nice to have a break and it is nice not to go to call the call the call. So as we look at this fiscal year and we look at, as Steve mentioned, the, having to cover the shortfall, you know, every department had to contribute, and I looked at the vacancies that we had as a department. And my job obviously is to make sure first and foremost that the city is safe. I think with these reductions and these freezings, we can still maintain that. But is it going to be difficult and is it going to impact our city? Yes. My biggest concern, and we will continue to monitor that, and I'll update the council as we go, is workload. And we're not typically, when we lose officers recently in the last few years, it's typically been to out-of-state for people to change lifestyle and change career paths or take their family out. And there's not a lot that we can do about that. But the second reason that we have lost officers in the past has been workload, that they go other places where they don't have as high as a workload, so it is a concern. I have not seen, that's something that we continually talk about. I have not seen, we lost a few officers lateral last year. We made a schedule adjustment in the last, about four months ago, to actually help with that burden of workload and the enjoyment of our officers, which I think has been a positive effect. But it still continues to be busy. As far as quality of life crimes and things like that, we've had those discussions and we've talked about it here. No, those calls, we're still continuing to find, try to find solutions to use the right tool for the job. And where we can, where we can have an officer that has a gun and a badge handle gun and a badge type calls, that's what I prefer. If it doesn't need to have an officer, a sworn officer respond, those are the things that we're continuing to look for and try to strategize to utilize those resources. It makes sense fiscally and it makes sense responsibly how we're trying to act. So I don't know if I answered all of your questions, but I was trying to give an overview of.
You did a great job, you did a great job, and I appreciate our officers, I appreciate the department. I know how hard they are working, trying to do the best to keep Modesto a great city that we all desire to have. What my concern is, that, yeah, as you said, the response that officers that have a gun and a badge need to go to is being circumvented at times, not deliberately, not by choice, just by, I'm sure, its timing as much as anything, is because those officers that we've had to reduce this, the community service officers particularly, that can do that other quality of life issues, things, take the reports and the rest, those are where we're making the greatest cuts right now. And that's where we need probably some significant help in the future if this thing should continue for a period of time. Again, the officers, I really appreciate them for all they do for our community. Sometimes it's not recognized, but a lot of us out here see what they do and appreciate everything that they're doing. And as I said, to you also, working with less than the best information and the best amount of budget that you should be having. And from my guess, we're ways away from it, but I'm making a little bit of noise right now to bring that up, that level up, to get some focus on it from our council. And I know there's lots of, I know our council's behind having the best police officers and the best department that they can have. Thank you, chief.
No problem. And I think just the last thing, just to echo what you said, I'd be remiss if I didn't, is in the midst of all this, our department is resilient, the men and women of this police department, they work tremendously hard every day to keep this city safe and handle the calls that come in, and will continue to do so even in spite of these cuts, but I appreciate your words, thank you.
Thank you, chief. And Mayor, I don't have anything else, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other council member questions? All right, any comments or questions from the public regarding this item? Seeing that, any comments from the council? Councilmember Ricky?
I think one of the challenges, you know, this goes to kind of what Bill's talking about a little bit, is the, just all of the full-time salaries that we have to cover and how those expenses accelerate every year. And so what we need to do, if we want to try to get the level of service that you're talking about, Bill, I think what we need to work on together as a council, and when you talk about the strategic plan, I agree, is we have to find a way to increase our revenues so that we can, you know, put all those things together and make the numbers add up. The challenge that we have is that it appears like our, you know, and I think I'm echoing what you're saying here, is like that our revenues aren't expanding at the level we need to to get the levels of service we need to achieve, right?
That's exactly it, that's exactly.
And so like, I'm not sure what the strategy is there, but it might take investments or, you know, some, when we're visioning. This, and I'm trying to have this conversation in public so that we can, because, you know, around getting around the Brown Act and all that. But like, we need to figure out how it is exactly we can come up with this revenue so that we can get the city the services that they deserve.
Yeah.
That's my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council members with comments? Councilmember Madrigal, your hand may still be up from the previous comment. Okay, any other comments here? Seeing that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Wright.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Zalaki, maybe we have the.
Councilmembers Madrigal.
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Zalaki?
Aye.
Canoyer?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Escuia Brayton?
Aye.
Mayor Swollen?
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Christensen. All right, item number eighteen. Consider approving the pandemic recovery strategy, Modesto Forward, and the associated spending plan for the American Rescue Plan funds and authorizing the city manager to carry out the necessary steps to implement the strategy and spending plan for the first allocation. Staff, for our report.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm going to go ahead and take this item. So it goes without saying that over the last fourteen or fifteen months have changed all of our lives. The pandemic has taken a tremendous toll on not only our individual lives and our families, but our community, and it has affected the city of Modesto as well and the services that we're able to provide. Even prior to the pandemic, and as we just discussed with the budget, our list of needs in this, that we are to deliver to our community are long. We have a ton of deferred maintenance, we are short-staffed tremendously while continuing to make cuts every year, while still expecting, our residents are still expecting the same level of service as they should and that we want to deliver. But we have been given an opportunity here that I don't know that I would have ever said I would have seen in my life or that anybody would have ever said that they've seen in our life. And it's giving us an opportunity to make up some ground that we have lost over the last several years. So we are going to present to you today details regarding our proposed allocations of the American Rescue Plan Act. We call it ARPA, next slide. The American Rescue Plan is derived from President Biden and a one point nine trillion dollar emergency relief measure that was intended to stem off the impacts of the COVID nineteen on the American public, including first responders, frontline health workers, teachers, and local government. This included a hundred and thirty billion dollars directly towards local government, and that was utilizing the Community Development Block grant funding allocations. In addition to the direct funding that we received as a city, there's also additional funding that's been made available to the community through various forums. And I won't go through them all, we've been talking about them, but there's an additional emergency rental assistance program. One of the issues that we had with that program is it didn't assist homeowners who are also struggling to make their mortgages. This American Rescue Plan provides relief for them, additional funds for restaurants, utility payments, and then the jobs and economic recovery programs. So there are other programs that are going to work concurrently with the American Rescue Plan Act. We see that the American Jobs Plan that has also been floated by President Biden, as well as the American Families Plan, could bring additional dollars that we'll be able to invest in our community. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention other recipients of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, including the county, Modesto City Schools, and our neighboring cities. This provides opportunities to us, for us to work extremely closely with them to combine our efforts and leverage those dollars to make even a greater impact on our community. I always say, most citizens don't know where our borders end and the next city begins, and it provides us that opportunity to work collaboratively to find solutions that benefit not only our city, but our community at large. And then there's also the adoption of the state budget. As been reported in the news, frequently over the last several weeks, the state is experiencing record surplus funds that will allow us to tap into some of those and make strides in some of our initiatives, particularly in the areas of homelessness as well as infrastructure. So what is available in this funding? So the direct funding that the city of Modesto received is forty point, forty-five point eight nine million dollars. And I'm happy to announce that we received our first tranche of the money this morning. It's not every day twenty-two point nine million dollars is delivered to the city bank account, but it was this morning. So that was good news when I got the email from our Director of Finance. morning, so that was good news when I got the email from our Director of Finance. We are required to obligate those funds by 2024 and expend them by 2026. There's also an additional $3.4 million in home investment partnerships to create affordable housing for low-income households. And then there's also competitive funding that we're gonna be able to tap into, including funding for our airport, additional FEMA funding. We have submitted an application for reimbursement for our Center Plaza vaccine pointed distribution site, the $300 million for FEMA firefighter grants. We have submitted our application for those fundings as well. There's additional funding for transit as well as additional capital project funds. So there are some restrictions on this funding, and, and so we have to be cognizant as we went through the plan, what was eligible and what was not eligible. The eligible expenses are for the public health response, address the negative impacts caused by the pandemic, support hardest-hit communities, which I would state that we are probably one of them, investments in water and sewer infrastructure, broadband infrastructure, and premium pay for essential workers. Now, what is not eligible is that these funds are not to be used for pension costs, and we all know that pensions continue to be a great burden on our budget with them continuing to escalate year over year and providing great strain on our budget, however, none of these funds can go towards those pension costs. If we do not comply with the regulations set out by the Department of Treasury, we will be required to repay those funds. So our approach to allocating these funds was to engage our council and our community on, on ways we can invest this money wisely. So we went to each of our different standing committees, and we started out with our Economic Development Committee and looked at the economic vitality portion of our strategic plan. I won't go through the list, but it obviously, as the economic development looks at how we're gonna grow our economy here in Modesto, we have the downtown master plan and how we can submit some of these funds to, and further the initiatives within that plan. We talked earlier where there were several comments about downtown beautification. At the finance committee, they deal mainly with our, our dollars and governance and service delivery, and so they felt it was important to recover some of our costs, our lost revenue, and to address some of our deferred maintenance that we have in the city. And our safety in communities focused on quality of life, homelessness, forestry, and some of our nonprofits and how we're gonna attract people to Modesto once pan, once all the restrictions related to the pandemic are over, how are we gonna make Modesto a place that people want to visit? So as we took the information that we received from the committee, we put it into a strategic framework. We, we looked at it on several different levels. Okay? What is the most immediate needs that we have that need to be addressed, but also helping support our community with essential programs to help the residents climb out of the pandemic? Service delivery, we talked a little bit about it in the last item, and how we're gonna prioritize our programs and services for the betterment of our community, implement plans that are gonna reduce our costs ongoing. While we talked about having shortages in our revenue allocations, but we also have to find ways that we can continue to reduce our expenses. I talked a little bit earlier about regional partnerships and how we continue to leverage those opportunities, and then what we call big swings. How are we gonna reach for the stars and really try and make short-term investments for long-term gains? And I'll reiterate, what you're gonna see here is no allocations that are for ongoing expenses. We knew this is one-time funding. We did not wanna create programs that were gonna have ongoing expenses, and so we took a great deal of, of care in making sure that those allocations were strategic, that they were gonna have the best and most lasting impact for us, as this is an opportunity that, that we do not want to squander because we feel like it can have a significant impact on our community for years and years and maybe even decades to come. So here are the recommended allocations and our next steps, and I'm not gonna go through and read all of these. We talk about economic development and how that's such a vital part of our future. We came up with revolving loan fund programs because what we wanna do is make these funds last into the future. So when we talk about, we have a great deal of our community that are still on septic, and it's expensive for them to transition to our sewer system, creating a loan program for individuals to tap into our system and then repay us back over time, that will allow us to fund that into the future so we can eventually get everyone off of our septic. Twalomee River, we heard is a great opportunity for us to invest and become another tourist attraction within the city of Modesto. We have some funds for that. The Rad Card Program, which was an item that was approved by the council a couple months ago. Workforce development, we can't grow as a city if we don't have a workforce that can support the vision of the city. We have some nonprofit support with the Children's Museum, Awesome Spa, Car Museum, as well as support for our convention and Visitors Bureau. We wanna help make sure that they are able to attract people to the city of Modesto to visit these great museums and playgrounds that are being proposed by our community. We have, wanna look at expanding Wi-Fi in the downtown as well as our community centers, and then we are looking at doing a study on enhanced infrastructure financing districts. These, you think of these as redevelopment agencies. They went away several years ago. This provides us a mechanism to potentially enter into these financing districts to leverage opportunities to pay for some of the infrastructure that we know seems to be, or that we don't have the resources to enhance right away. Within the quality of life, we have labor expenses. We saw in the budget, the allocation to appropriate funds from this to pay for costs for fiscal year 21, 22, additional money for homeless support. Blight abatement is a area that we heard loud and clear from our community when we developed our strategic plan that needed to be addressed. And I will note, and I forgot to mention it on the last slide, some of these are being proposed for two years of funding, and I also, I apologize, I forgot to mention, this is only one year's worth of spending. We only have one, they only gave us one tranche of the money. We're gonna get another tranche next May. We felt like it was prudent only to allocate the money that we have, but some of these programs we know are gonna cross multiple years and therefore had two years of allocations associated with them. Let me back up to the mental health clinician program and a partnership with BHRS. We've been having conversations with them about how we can enhance our mental health program with our police department. Downtown beautification, $700,000. We know we can spend that money working in collaboration with the Downtown Improvement District as well as Domo to make improvements in our downtown to attract visitors down there. Some EMS equipment and grants to neighborhoods. And then additional, we talked earlier about the deferred maintenance to Fire Station One, that was brought up earlier. Another large area within our city that we heard loud and clear was our forestry program and how we are gonna handle our trees. This is also a two-year allocation. The lift to address the tree situation in our city is very large. This program would include some replanting of trees, removal of trees, stump removal, mistletoe abatement, and things of that nature. We needed additional funding to make sure we had secured enough funds for our general, comprehensive general plan update, and this provides those allocations. We had some information technology needs that we needed to address. We also had deferred maintenance at our parks and public facilities that needed to be upgraded, and we had a, and that will sit in a, in a fund until such time that they're needed. For example, some of the allocations we had to the nonprofits, as we, as we release those funds, those are fine. There are other programs that are gonna need more work, so take the forestry program. We know our internal staff right now could not potentially, possibly handle the load. We're gonna have to come back with contracts, potential MOUs on various items, and so we are gonna be bringing back items throughout the next several months to make sure that we have the programs behind them and that the community and the council know how we're spending those dollars with specific work plans. And so, and we're also continuing to work with our partners in additional engagements. For example, we have a meeting with the city schools in the coming weeks to find ways that we could potentially partner, and I know that the county is also working on various programs that we're gonna want to also be a part of. So with that, I think, just right here, this is our, our pandemic recovery strategy. We're putting it into a nice brochure. We will have it on our website so that the community can continue to monitor our progress towards the pandemic recovery. And with that, Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions from question time now from council members.
Quick question on Fire Station One, will the $2 million cover everything that has been put off for a while?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilmember Wright, I didn't.
He asked if $2 million will cover Fire Station One.
Absolutely not. We're gonna have to come back and continue to work. We are looking at public-private partnerships and other things we need to do, but we know we needed some initial seed money to start exploring what our final solutions are gonna be for Fire Station One.
All right. Any more questions?
So what's the grand total on that thing that we're gonna need? I keep, I, the number is always in date, I just remember it's been significant. It's always been a question of funding, I just, do you remember?
So I'm gonna give you a very vague answer, and, and it also depends. If we were to just rehabilitate current Station One, I believe it's six to eight million dollars, and if we were to rebuild the station, and this is where I say it depends, if we build it, it's 12 to 14 million dollars. If we enter into public-private partnerships, it could be less than that, but more than the current rehab cost, so somewhere in there.
Any other questions, questions from council members? Seeing then, any comments from the public? Yes, please step forward.
Hi there, Mayor, Councilman, Mayor, the city manager. Thanks for Chris Murphy in Modesto, California, and thank you for your, the way you approached this, and thank for taking a long-range vision of this. I think we do have a huge opportunity right now to change the way we look at Modesto, not only the way we look at Modesto, but the way others look at Modesto, and I thank you for taking the time to see what it takes. Many of the council members today talked about how do we change the equation? How do we bring more revenue, more people, more interest in our community? And I think the way you've done this is really gonna allow us to start driving that revenue so that we can support the expenses that we have, and also drive people to town, and what we're doing also is investing in civic pride. By working with our history, celebrating our classic culture, we are gonna start teaching our people in the neighborhood and our communities how good this town can really be. And I think we picked a good place to start, and your support's been fantastic, and I think the way you looked at it was very smart, and I think this, these will be sustainable things that will propel us long into the future. So thank you for your time, thanks for your consideration, and a good job on, on how you're managing coming out of this really tragic couple of years, and I think we can end up being strong out of it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Are there any online? I don't see any, any comments from the council.
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember, Councilmember Wright.
I wanna thank my fellow council members for their input. I think we all put our heads together, and there's some great things in our community that we need to accomplish, and we all had some great ideas. And then I wanna thank the staff and our city manager for really taking all of our ideas and really giving us each something to work with in our community, and I think the proposal that's put together is gonna be something that everybody in our community is gonna be proud of, and I'm just amazed on how staff has really come together to, to really put this together and move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Madrigal.
Just a quick technical question on the support for the Rad Card. So after today, are we gonna be releasing the funding to the, to the downtown Modesto partnership for the Rad Card, or when will that happen?
So I met with the executive director of the downtown partnership yesterday. I'm getting ready to send all of you an email to help us spread the word about the citywide expansion of the Rad Card program. We're gonna do a two-week marketing to get the, the restaurants and the boutiques a chance to sign up on the app. Once that happens, then we'll go ahead and release the funds, which will, and then they'll become available to the public, and do a second marketing campaign to make sure that the public knows that the funds are available.
Councilmember Zalaki.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just express my appreciation to the staff that worked hard with this allocation and coming up with a, I think, a pretty sensible solution. It's not everything that I would like, I'm sure it's not everything that other council members would like, but we came to a mutual agreement on things, and I just appreciate how, how it was thought through, how, why, I mean, broad the solution is, and they kept it all within the strategic plan. That was, I didn't see it going off the reservation on the strategic plan either, and that's, that's particularly encouraging that we can work together so, as well as we did, with this much money and come to a conclusion that I think everybody's pretty happy with.
Thank you. Councilmember Madrigal, I see your hand up. Is that from previously? All right. Councilmember Iskutia Brayton?
Ghetto to what Councilmember Wright and Zalaki have already said. Amazing work, congratulations. Thank you so much for your job well done.
All right. I just have one comment to make, but I cannot not say that Cecil Russell is here, Chris Murphy is here, and Mary Ann and John Sanders are here, and they stayed until the end. And I honestly don't know if there's other people in the community that have given more to this community of their heart and soul and spirit and effort and music. They have done so much for our community, and this is, I think, kind of a time to celebrate a little bit, that some of these commitments and activities, museums, whatever, that everyone has worked so hard on for so long, that will receive a little boost here. So I'm really grateful, and I appreciate you staying for the duration. Thank you so much to staff, the effort that has been put into this budget, to our council workshop, to Forward Together, our, all of it. It's just so much work, and I really thank all of you for that. So with that, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
All right. Motion from Councilmember Wright?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Iskutia Brayton. May we have the roll call?
Councilmembers, Councilmembers Madrigal.
Aye.
Ricky?
Aye.
Zalaki?
Aye.
Canoyer?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Iskutia Brayton?
Aye.
Mayor Swollen?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Are there any matters too late for the agenda? I see Councilmember Iskutia Brayton's hand up, but I think that might just be left. That's all right. No problem. All right. Seeing then, I am calling this meeting of the city council adjourned. the city council adjourned.